Welcome to the Bellevue City Council Extended Study Session for Monday, February 10, 2020. First order of business is the approval of the agenda. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Next up is oral communications. We allocate 30 minutes total for all oral communications and we have three people speaking to each side of one topic. And you get three minutes to speak. You'll see the lights go on. Once it turns flashing red, your time is over and I'll ask you to wrap up with one sentence, okay? So who's first signed up?
There are three speakers tonight. My first is Michael Eaton.
Okay. Mr. Eaton. Welcome.
Good evening. I'm Michael Eaton with Chinese Information Service Center. I'm the executive director. And I'm here to speak about the census. So we were an agency that was formed in 1972 to serve immigrants from Asia, Eastern Europe, Latin America, and other parts of Asia. And we've changed over the last 48 years to provide services from preschools to family support to senior services. And we have offices in Bellevue, Seattle, Kent, and Redmond. And a couple of months ago, we received funding from Washington State as well as the Seattle Foundation to support a complete count for the 2020 census. That funding enabled us to hire Chinese and Russian-speaking staff and form two complete count committees, one for the Chinese-speaking population and one from the Russian-speaking population. And both of those are very diverse groups. Just to give you an example, the Russian-speaking population come from countries such as Russia, Ukraine, Azerbaijan, Kazakhstan, and many other countries in Eastern Europe and Central Asia. And thanks to the leadership of the city council and the city of Bellevue for supporting the Seattle Foundation and as well as other efforts, we are able to participate in the East King County Communities Count Committee. We also had staff that were present recently at the Bellevue Square Lunar New Year event. And we were also able to produce some prosperity displays that help promote the census. So some of the activities that we will be doing in the future within the city of Bellevue include questionnaire assistance at our Bellevue location in Lake Hills. We plan to conduct that between March 16 and April 30. And right now, we've scheduled that every Wednesday from 10:00 to 1:00 p.m. And we'll provide translation support as well as helping people understand why the census is important and helping them walk through because we know this year is the first year that the census will be online. And people will be receiving postcards pretty soon in March. And so the concerns are that it is online. A lot of our older adult population may not have access to computers or they may not be familiar with how to navigate the website for the census. We are also participating in the -- we're also organizing two complete count committees for the Russian-speaking and Chinese-speaking population. So we have a Russian-speaking complete count committee meeting scheduled this week and then one for the Chinese community next week. And through that work, we are coordinating with several other nonprofit and community-based organizations, including the Washington Association of Chinese-American Physicians, KINON, and the Chinese Institute of Engineers, and many other groups. So just for example, we may be able to distribute a lot of the informational materials at these organizations' clinics and office locations and through their own social media. So we're hoping to amplify the message about the complete count. Because we know in Bellevue, it's critical for education, for transportation, for ensuring we understand how many people speak different languages. And so we're a partner. We appreciate all your leadership and support.
Mr. Eaton, thank you very much. We're having a presentation later tonight, so if you have more to say, probably say more at that time if you'd like.
Great. Thank you, Mayor.
All right. Thank you. Welcome. I forgot to say, please state your name and address.
Yes. Hello, everyone. I'm Lalita Opala, and I'm the executive director for India Association of Western Washington. And I'm here to first and foremost, thank you all for the amazing gift of providing us a census grant along with Seattle Foundation and King County General Elections because that has enabled IAWW to launch a massive census awareness campaign. It offered us an opportunity to actually hire a part-time census civic engagement coordinator who has then worked with our staff to create an awareness campaign, which in the month of January alone, has addressed more than 5,500 individuals from our community, particularly from Bellevue alone. And that has come by her and her staff and myself being present at every cultural event that our community has hosted on Fridays, Saturdays, and Sundays. So we're out there every single weekend in different parts of King County, very often in Bellevue, educating our community about the importance and the value of a complete count. And I can tell you that more often than not, our H1 visa community, our H4 visa community, our green card holders are not aware that this is something that they must get involved and accurately file their census forms because they assume this is something that citizens take care of. And so that has been a big part of our challenge, is really creating awareness on that end. And to that matter, we are -- every week, we are creating training for ambassadors, though that is not an area that we have been funded on by the Washington Census Alliance. We have still taken that on as a project that we will absorb by our own personal means, but we have now gathered 45 female ambassadors, all of who have no jobs and would get gift cards from us just for doing the extensive work that they are doing. But in a way, they would also learn about what census really means and become ambassadors in their own homes. So the weekly training session for these ambassadors is held at North Bellevue Community Center, a space that you have offered for us to run our pop-up community centers at. And so we are very grateful for that, of course. And starting March on through July, we will be having census assistance centers because there's also the follow-up, the no-response follow-up, that starts in May and ends in July. And so we're out there at Crossroads Mall. I know we're talking to Bellevue Square. We haven't heard back. There are some challenges when we have to go out and announce who we are, but it has always helped us when we've said we are funded by the city of Bellevue.
Ms. Opala, thank you so much.
So you have -- yes, you have really empowered us in this process. I can say that we are definitely committed to having that complete count from our community. We're a part of the East Side Complete Count Committee. We are taking our job very seriously.
Thank you.
And if you have any questions, we can answer.
Well, we can't do that public comment, but if you would like to stay for the presentation, if you have more to say, or if we have questions, we can ask you then.
Sure.
Yeah. Thank you.
Hi, everyone.
Welcome. Hi.
Tonight's a night full of gratitude, I see. In front of you are the handcrafted, letter-pressed posters for Wintergrass. And there is a spreadsheet like this from Visit Bellevue. That's an economic impact report. So I'm here today to once again thank you very, very much for the support you've given Wintergrass through the Bellevue Arts Commission. We've received your grant support for a number of years now, and it has allowed us to grow and expand and to continue what we do with education. And I often come in and talk to you once a year. Last year and the year before that, you gave us a wonderful proclamation. Tonight, what I really wanted to do was talk about the economic impact that Wintergrass has had on the community. We know there's a cultural and arts impact, but in terms of the economic impact, we have seen so much in the last few years. We work closely with Visit Bellevue, and this report indicates that Wintergrass yielded over $3 million in overall sales in 2019. We supported 644 jobs, filled over 3,500 rooms, and supported the tax base of $84,000. This report breaks down categories that include sales by sector. We saw an increase in the use of transportation, space, rental, retail, and recreation, but the largest sector was lodging and food and beverage retail. And because we have 12,000 to 14,000 people that are here, to be accurate, there are about 4,000 each day. So it's a little bit like gross and unique. Overall, there's a total of 14,000 people that come into town and they visit the museums and the parks and the retail locations, as well as all the hotels. So your support really has become a win-win-win. The festival, the city, and the businesses have all benefited from your generosity. So thank you. I am a new grandma, and so everything about being a grandma is the developmental milestones, and it's always about the firsts. So the first for Wintergrass this year is we've invited Seattle Pacific University to perform with our youth orchestra on Sunday. And our youth orchestra has also been a recipient of a CMA Grammy and an IBMA Award. So it's a very credible afternoon for folks to see that show. We have a new group of -- we have a new program called Musicians Owning Excellence, and it's a comprehensive curriculum for high school students to deeper theory on -- a deeper exploration of music theory. We also have, for the first time, a Bluegrass Without Borders theme. And we are allowing people to expand that title anywhere you want. And it's on the poster. It can be about borders. It can be the style of music. It can be how you interpret the music. It can be the people that come to Wintergrass. It's wide open. It's very inclusive and accepting. And then finally, we have our contract through 2024 with the Hyatt Regency. And I don't know if you've ever met people at the Hyatt Regency and how they talk about us, but it really is a bromance between the Hyatt Regency and Wintergrass. It's a very cohesive group of people and work very well together. And so I'll come back in a month and do my other three minutes. So thank you very, very much.
Thank you. And they say that for every dollar spent on cultural tourism, there's a $4 return.
So could you repeat that, please?
They say for every dollar spent on cultural tourism, there's a $4 return. So it is a very good investment.
That's good for everybody.
Yep.
Yeah.
Thank you.
And every overnight is exponential, too. So with the 2,500 or 3,500 heads and beds, it's a good thing for everybody.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
This is broken? It's working now? Why? Why it's working? I never, ever use one word and you cut my time for speak? Why you doing this, huh? Zihail Maideri! Nazi-social-democrat mafia with progressive Gestapo principle. A fascist, anti-Semitic, and killer. My name Alex Zimmerman. I'm president of Stand Up America. And I'm not Russian. I'm a Jew. Thank you very much for my best President Trump, who make me right now in another few million Jew nationality. So right now, I'm not Russian. No, no, no! And I don't want to be Russian for all my life. I want to be American for all my life. Different story. Okay. So what is I want to speak right now? This is pure fascism, but it's come from Seattle. Seattle is epicenter of fascism. Number-one fascist city in America. One-party system is always fascism. But this not only point to be a fascist, it point be a freaking idiot. This is exactly what this council and mayor doing right now. And I give you classic example. Last week, Council Halborn penalized by $500 penalty because she's a broken law. Gonzalez last year penalized five times for Open Public Meeting Act broken constitution. Five times. Yeah. Another nice council. Everybody chose her a chair. Very nice. Mayor Durkan, a U.S. prosecutor, give me two trespasses for one year, so for two years I cannot go to council chamber. And U.S. prosecutor don't know so we have a separation of government. Executive branch cannot stop and me go to legislative branch. It's not legal. Court, yes, but executive branch cannot. Guys, situation what is we have right now in Seattle so idiotic is is spread right now. But because I live in Bellevue for many, 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 many years, I ask right now 150,000 idiot who live in this city. Are you number-one richest city in America? Are you more intellectual city? Probably in America, too. So why so many idiot? I call this a degenerate idiot, you know what this mean? How is this possible? So people who educate and reach support Democrat, but is bring us to total collapse? Is exactly what's happened. I'd be very happy when another 50,000 Amazonian will come to Bellevue. It's a build be a beautiful place for everybody. This is exactly what this council doing. So right now, I speak to everybody. Stand up, America. Time 2020 is very important. Stand up!
Okay. So we have some good news. We won a wonderful place. What? Oh, no problem. I will table the award.
No, you're not arrest me?
It's not about you. It's our next speaker. Welcome. Could you give us your name and address?
Julie Cop, 3015 164th Place Northeast. And my concern is how the city council and the planning of city count, planning departments, how they really are uprooting our neighborhoods that we've lived in in 40 and 50 years. They're allowing -- and somehow, we have to be able to change the building. And I don't know how to do it. But I've been here enough times and my three minutes go nowhere, and I just come back and I do three more minutes, but it goes nowhere. I've been to court. It just cost me a lot of money, but I'm not getting a solution. And the people in our neighborhood are being taken advantage of by developers, by people that are subdividing their lots, putting huge houses from five feet to five feet. Take the whole area. If they subdivide, they build five feet to five feet. And we're just getting crunched out because we chose to live in the area that we live to enjoy the space, the vegetation. We're not getting this anymore. Now, it's tension having to see what's happening to our city. And however we can change it to get it down to not allowing this to happen, because people didn't go in to move to have their property cut in half with these. And I don't know what to do. I've dealt with you guys. I get nowhere. I've had an attorney. I'm still waiting for that, of that. But all it did was cost me a lot of money. And I don't know where to go. I can listen to you guys on TV. I can go to the meetings, but I don't get any input on what we can do as a community to get it down lower, so that people that move in, you don't change it to R3, R5, R10, R. Because we bought a lot that supports the house and the environment, and you're making us live in confined spaces. And if you can tell me how to get to what needs to be done, I would appreciate it. And I don't want to die and have my grandkids have to live with this. I don't know. If you can come up with the -- I don't get any feedback from you. I come and spend my three minutes, and that's it. Three minutes.
I'll tell you, Mrs. Cop, that public comment is not the best back-and-forth.
That's what I would like to know.
We listen, but you can make an appointment with me, or I think anybody on the council would be willing to sit down and listen to you, and there won't be a three-minute limit.
Except I think you're pro-growth. So it wouldn't do a lot of good.
I'm just offering you a choice.
I know. I'll take that choice.
Okay.
But it needs to go beyond that. And I don't know what to do, but it's not fair for people that bought, unless you have one of those.
I'm afraid your time is up.
Yeah. If you have one of those communities that doesn't let it happen, that's fine. But people that bought before that, they're stuck with your R3, R5.
So we had an award given to us on Thursday night from the Bellevue Downtown Association at their annual dinner. It's not an annual award, so this is pretty special. It's a placemaking award for the work that our city did on Maiden Bower Bay Park, Phase One. And we were fortunate to have our past park director in the audience, and he was able to come and speak to just the work that he did and the collaborations he had with staff and with the neighborhood and all the people that were involved in creating Phase One of that park. And I know many of us on the council also were involved in that. So very proud of this award. I hope we get Phase Two and Three done as well. But that's a good start. Okay. I think next on the agenda, we're going to talk about the Liveable City Year partnership that we had last year.
And just by way of background, you mentioned the Liveable City Year. The Liveable City Year program, the year-long partnership between the University of Washington and one local government to advance livability and sustainability in a community. So happens that in 2018 to 2019 academic year, the Liveable City Years partnered with the city of Bellevue. And there, the city proposed 50 projects to the program, which worked to connect interested faculty with city staff to complete 30 projects in just nine months. I think a lot of you came and heard some of the presentations that were made. But tonight, what we're here to talk to you about is the follow-up work that has been completed since the conclusion of the partnership. And with that, joining us this evening from the city manager's office is Nancy LaCombe, who's the assistant director, and Danielle Varan. Sorry, I'm going to butcher that. I apologize. Who is our management analyst. And with that, I'll go ahead and turn it over to you, Nancy.
Thank you, Mr. Mjaki. Good evening. Mayor Robinson and members of council. First of all, before we get started, I would like to acknowledge that there are some members of the audience in the audience tonight. And if, as I mentioned, you, if you could raise your hands, that would be great. So we have Terri Thompson-Randle. She's the Liveable City Year Program Manager. We have some of the faculty and the students who participated in the program. They're being shy. I know they're out there. And then we also have some of the city staff leads that were also working on those projects. Yay. So we are not here seeking direction from council, rather, we are here to provide you a look at what have we been doing, what's been going ongoing impact of our partnership with the Liveable City Year and the University of Washington, and highlight some advancements on the projects since the work was completed and delivery of over 30 reports, or actually delivery of 30 reports was completed. So our agenda tonight really is just going to be provide you a quick little background, note some of the scale of our partnership, and discuss a few of the projects. Some of them, we're going to talk a little bit more in detail, and other ones, we're just going to do a high-flyover of those. So unless Mr. Mjaki said in 2018, the city was awarded the -- was selected to be the partner for the Liveable City Year for the beginning in September of the 2018 and 2019 academic year. We did propose more than 50 projects, and we were matched up on 30 of those projects across a multitude of disciplines. Each of the projects was supported of the council vision and priorities, as well as some of the other city plans, such as the smart cities and the environmental stewardship initiatives. And so that's the end of my speaking part, and I'm going to turn this over to Danielle Verwarren, who was actually the project manager and the city liaison for the Liveable City Year.
Yes, and very glad to see all of you and the amazing turnout for our city project leads, students, and UW faculty. So first, I just want to acknowledge really truly the scale of this partnership. So before the city engaged with LCY, we talked with previous partners, the cities of Tacoma and Auburn. And the program was described to us as a flash mob of engagement, and that was true. As you can see up here, we had 30 projects completed by nearly 300 students. They put in 30,000 hours of their time on projects that advanced livability and sustainability in our community. We were able to engage all of the UW campuses, so we had students from Tacoma and Bothell as well, who came into our community to assist. We also had, again, that great turnout from 30 city project leads who put their time and their effort into making sure the students had everything they needed to turn over a product that we could continue to use that will have a lasting impact for our residents. So I'm going to start to go over a few of the projects in more detail. First was a community risk reduction partnership, and this was between the fire department and the Bothell School of Nursing and Health Studies. The faculty member for this, Annie Brock, is actually in the room tonight. And this was a partnership that just kept on giving. There's been an ongoing partnership between this program and the fire department, as well as quite a few that came out of it. So for this project, there were nursing students who came into our community to develop strategies for outreach to populations that are traditionally hard to reach. So we had community public health issues such as fall prevention for the elderly, individuals experiencing homelessness. And the students developed those outreach strategies, talked with residents, they completed surveys. A few of the outcomes from this project, the fire department partnered with King County Medic One to get free hands-only CPR training here in Bellevue that residents can take advantage of, as well as a new partnership with King County EMS to provide training within assisted living facilities on physicians' order life-saving techniques. Next is one that we're all very excited about. This is the winter weather route optimization. And I also believe there is a student in the audience who worked on this as well. The partnership was ongoing at the time of the snowpocalypse, so unfortunately, we didn't get to have that interplay. But these students really set the foundation for what route optimization can look like that our transportation department could continue to build upon. They got a great chance to work with those staff, and they've really, again, given us the information we need to move forward with that optimization. Later in this year, the transportation department will be pursuing technology that will allow them to better get the data, that will allow that optimization, as well as show the public in real time where the plows are, which I would also appreciate. Next was a trail-oriented development project. And this was between community development and an urban planning program. And this really looked at strategies to activate long-term and short-term those areas around the Wilburton segment of the East Trail. They identified quite a few that will be hopefully incorporated into the urban and landscape architecture components of a framework plan that is going to be built soon with King County Parks. And next was this great partnership on neighborhood engagement. So for this, we had a group of students who came forward to give us some new tools, new techniques, and strategies for the city to use to engage those within our neighborhoods and also those groups that are, again, underrepresented. So youth, as well as other individuals in diverse communities. A lot of the tools and techniques are being used now, including one new relationship that's very exciting between community development and three environmental conservation clubs at local high schools. All right. So up here on the screen, you can start to see, we're going to high-flyover each one of the 30 projects. The color coding and logos all tie back to the council strategic target areas that these projects supported. If you see that kind of white bar border around them, that means the project has taken some concrete steps toward implementation. And there are two on this page that I want to highlight. So first is a food truck project that was completed with the University of Washington. And these students took a look at permitting and regulation and how we could really set a program like this to succeed. And we actually have a project lead again here in the audience. But this has led to a good foundation for a pilot program that's going to be moving forward for food trucks in downtown Bellevue. Yay. Moving on, we've got safe parking lots. So this is a great graduate researcher who came in to develop, to look at some best practices around the safe parking lot structure. So institutions allowing individuals experiencing homelessness that have vehicles to come there at night. The city will be taking a look at this as a potential option to help address some of the 24-hour parking violations that we have all over the city. And I know there are a number of faith-based communities who may be interested in this as well. All right. We have high-quality built-in natural environment next. There was a fantastic amount of projects here, and I know for quite a few of these, they are in those early stages of moving with the results, but they'll just have to be sequenced in time. be sequenced in time. So, the first I wanna talk about is just the image catalogs. This was a great urban design visual catalog of photos that would show permit applicants, how really designs that fit within city code, and also stress things that are important to the city, such as pedestrian livability. Next, the Future of Wetland Design Project. I was actually able to attend the final presentations, and it was fantastic to see these creative landscape architecture students showing a fresh perspective on how Bellevue Botanical Garden can move forward in re-envisioning some of the elements of the future wetland sun terrace garden. And High Performance Government. As you can see, nearly all of the projects in this category are moving forward in implementation. The first one I wanna highlight, and you will see it soon, students at the Evans School of Public Policy and Governance developed recommendations on the city's budget book. Those recommendations around structure are currently being implemented on the upcoming fiscal year 21, '22 budget, as well as additional recommendations about online presentation. Those will be taken a look at later in the year. The next was a partnership, really citywide, with the School of Law at U-Dub around UAS, which is unmanned aerial systems, more commonly referred to as drone, technology applications. There are quite a few, and it really enabled the city to start to take a look at where we could use this technology to improve efficiency, increase our services, which has really set the stage for potential policy, maybe program launch in the future. All right, and just ending on a highlight, the city was awarded the Outstanding Community Partner Award by the Epic N Network, which is the, let's see, the Educational Partnerships for Innovation in Communities. And really, in a lot of the information that they put out was just to say that the city was so fantastic in outreach both to the community, to city staff, and really took on a lot of the proposals that were given by the university. It was very bold in our leadership. And so, with that, again, just circling back information only, giving you a look into the outcomes and the ongoing impact of this fantastic partnership.
Great, thank you very much. So, I'll just go around. Do you wanna start, Deputy Mayor Newenhouse? Any comments or questions?
Just a couple of comments. So, so impressed by this program, and it just feels like yesterday when we were on the foyer there looking at all the different projects, and a lot of people getting very excited about all these potential projects. I think the snowplow one optimization, I think, was everybody's favorite, probably because probably top of mind at the time. But, no, this is outstanding partnership that has resulted, obviously, in quite a few projects, and some being partially or fully implemented. So, I guess I'd have one question. Which of all the projects do you think's gonna have the biggest impact to the city? And can we actually quantify that, that impact with actual dollars? I wonder if we can look at it either at a cost savings, or either an efficiency level that we didn't have before? Kinda curious about that, if you can select one or two projects that you think are kinda, they're all equally important, and all have equal value, but is there one or two that really kinda stand out from the rest?
Let's see, Nancy, you got... Took a vote from all the project leaders.
The UAS implementation, or the potential of using UAS has a pretty, could have a pretty significant, pardon me, impact.
Sure.
Because of the fact that police would use it for like crash scenes and things like that. They have found, best practices show that it takes, you know, something that when they shut down a road for six or eight hours, if there's a fatality, if you bring in the UAS, you can actually cut it down to about an hour and a half, two hours. So, there's a significant benefit to not only staff time, but also to the community for things that aren't, that don't have to have been shut down. So, that's one of the ones that comes to mind that could have a significant benefit.
And I'd also emphasize, everything that we asked of the university with regard to engagement, that has seen incredible value, not only to the departments that asked for that information, so say, Community Developments around the great neighborhoods, but that information can be shared citywide to allow all of the other departments to really build off those lessons. I will mention in terms of value add, that we will be putting out an evaluation, a survey here soon for all of the project leads.
Oh, great.
So, they can start to maybe get a feeling for what they would've paid, say, a consultant, for some of the work that they receive, so they can really get to those dollars, as well as an impact to residents.
Fantastic, I look forward to seeing that. Thank you.
Councilmember Berksdale.
All right. Excuse me. So, this is really exciting, having taught in a couple of universities. I know the importance of trying to bring practice into the classroom, and, I mean, the fact that it's a win-win situation also for Bellevue, I mean, that really, I think, speaks for the program's quality. Is there any takeaway in terms of being able to do this again in the future? Like, what's the likelihood that we'll be able to do it, and, you know, their plans for that?
So, we were approached by the university pretty soon after this Herculean effort about whether or not there could be a second partnership for implementation. I think at that time, because we did engage on such an amazing scale, a full partnership again would need to take some time so that we can really show that we can use the results. But, there have been, I'd say, one-off partnerships to continue in that implementation. So, say, Community Risk Reduction, quite a few from our Community Development Department will continue with studios, but I think that door is open, I hope, for the future.
Awesome. A lot of good projects. Thank you for all the work that you're doing, and congratulations to all the students, and thanks to the staff as well.
Councilmember Lee.
Thank you. I'm really glad to see your report. I was very impressed when I attended the workshop, you know, when you presented all the projects. Very impressive. And also talking to the people who are engaged, who participated, and the instructors, very impressive what you were looking at. But, I'm glad that you bring it back the way you have, just to show how that study actually led to some real application improvement. And because we do hear sometimes from the public, say, well, what are you doing with this? What do you do with it after you spend all the time, energy? I think it's a good thing to know for the people who participated, plus that the city who actually work with you, how some of these actually make a difference. So, I think the things you mentioned, you know, ongoing, continuing work with Fire Department, with Transportation Departments, and Trail Project, Neighborhood Engagement, these are all wonderful, real results and benefit from what you've done. You know, because we have to be accountable to the public, we just don't do it for exercise, having some fun. Even though in itself, it's probably a good thing, it's worthwhile, but, you know, I think this adds more value, you know, this value added to what you do. So, I hope that our, of course, the actual proof in the pudding is the departments themselves that are working with you, using your recommendation, how they are actually making it work for the city. And that really leads to your next, the question that was asked, are we gonna do it? And if it's really good, really helpful, benefit the city, city department, I believe that we should support it. I would, for one, support it if we can justify it, right? So, I think that's a great thing. Of course, the question is whether U-Dub wants to do it again, but we definitely will do whatever we can to, you know, persuade them. But, the key is, so I, my thought is that how is actually helping the department? It might have to come from the city departments themselves, because it's up to them how to implement it, and what value they see, and how are they planning to use these tools, you know, for the future development? And I think it's important. You have given us the tools, but the key is, how do we apply the tools to our benefit? So, if the departments, I think, I'm gonna ask you, who are actually working with these tools, I would like to hear from them, what are they doing with it? How they see as things that are benefiting the city already, and what potential would be to even do more, you know, for the city? And then, what else they may be looking for, wanting U-Dub give us even more opportunity to learn more, you know? Whether realistically, should we do it right now, or maybe we should wait and digest a little bit before, you know, actually get things happening, before we go on to another one? So, I think these are some of the real questions for us to lead to the next phase. So, thank you again for your report. It's very, very promising, very rewarding that we see that what you have done actually is benefiting the city, but it would be good to have the city departments give us a report on these items individually. Thank you.
Okay. Councilmember Robertson.
Thanks. You know, we see ourselves as a really innovative city, and getting a fresh set of eyes looking at how we do things in our city, I think helps us earn that title again and again. And so, the Livable City Year, it's really, it's exciting because bringing in outside perspectives to have them work on some of these issues. I bet we came up with some solutions that we hadn't come up with ourselves.
No.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, it's cool. So, and I really loved the open house last year, when we got to look at all the projects and talk to the, talk to the teammates, and I think these kind of partnerships are exactly what we should do. However, I understand about wanting to do implementation before we kick off a brand-new round of 30 more projects. So, to that end, I know that not every project will be implemented, but of the ones that we do plan to move forward with, what is the timeline for how long we think it will take until we're pretty much done with all the implementation of, of the projects?
So, some of them will be coming forward, some of them, like the UAS policy, some of that stuff will be coming forward to council in the coming months ahead, because that'll have to be policies that'll have to be done. And then, depending on how that, how our interaction goes with the community on some of these things, they could be implemented sooner rather than later. Some of the other things where we've just done the, the public engagement, those have been implemented. So, those are actually already being used, and as Danielle noted, across different departments, not just the folks that were involved in the particular report. Some of the other ones, we, it just depends on how workload goes, on whether or not we can actually advance the, advance the, what the reports that the students found out, and then we'll just have to wait and see how that works as our workloads and our workplans for 2020 are developed.
Okay. Well, assuming we can get things on track and implemented or in place in the next few years, it'd be good to, I would support doing this again. I know it's a huge effort on behalf of staff, and it's not free for us to do, but it really brings a lot of fresh perspective, and it's very useful for the youth in our community that are attending these schools. So, but we don't wanna do it too often, because there's only so many ideas that we can absorb, right? So, but I would support when we have the time for a breath, after we've finished the implementation, revisiting it and thinking about doing it again. I think it's been a very valuable, valuable exercise for all concerned. So, thanks.
Councilmember Stokes.
All of the above, at this point. No, I think, and some of the things have been, have been hit on that I was thinking about, and it's just a great event. I mean, I think we all enjoyed it, obviously, and it was nice to have that out there. I wish it had stayed out a lot longer. I'd like to go on back and see it two, three times to kind of absorb things. But, we did have a, it was interesting, and it's been touched on here, but we had a comment, somebody wrote in, and it was kind of a, gee, why, why are you having these kids come over here and do this when we have staff and they should be doing this kind of work? Talk a little bit about the value of having this kind of a connection, and again, fellow council members have mentioned some of this, but why is this so great? And there's a lot of staff involved. But, kind of tell us again, what was the value of that whole intersection and the talking and getting these students involved, and people that aren't necessarily living in Bellevue, but come in and see Bellevue and are involved with it, and why you think it's such a valuable thing? Because I think it's fantastic. I agree with Councilmember that we should do it again.
So, Danielle touched a little bit on it, and the fact that a lot of the work effort that was done, staff just didn't have the bandwidth to take on, and we'd have to hire consultants to be able to do some of that work, to be able to help us with that. So, going back and asking staff, what would you have had a consultant, what do you think you would've spent having a consultant do this work? So, we were able to expand the ability of staff to be able to advance certain initiatives throughout the city, without having to pay a significant consultant fee to be able to advance those initiatives. And as Councilmember Robertson said, there's a lot of fresh new ideas that came through that, and getting something that's just a little bit different than, you know, when you hire a consultant, you, you know, they're gonna sort of, they have an idea, but bringing in the student population is amazing at the creativity that they come up with. And so, the ability to be able to tap into that, and also have the students being able to do that work, 30,000 hours of student time is a lot of time.
And one more thing I might add to that, is that this one partnership is discreet for Livable City Year, but the ongoing partnerships between faculty members and city staff that have been set up will continue on into the future, and the value of those we're not even calculating. So, those relationships will continue to be more important, will continue to get the fresh perspective and those innovative ideas. Students will keep pushing us, as far as we'll let them, in, in those directions that we might not have considered, that are now academic practice that we may not know of yet. So, that, that's going to be something great, that I know a lot of the project leads are very excited about.
Well, I think it's important to kind of emphasize that, in any of the information we get out and talking to people about it, just, because sometimes people don't realize that, you know, the depth of this, and they just see this little project, but just amazing. So, thanks very much, and thanks to the staff. It's fantastic.
Councilmembers.
Yeah, I, I really think this is just amazing, because, you know, it takes a lot of work to work in partnership to get things done, so the fact that there were 30 project leads on the city side, the equivalent throughout all of the campuses at the university is huge, and I'm hoping that what that means is that perhaps some of these students see the real-life experiences of a city like Bellevue, and they may wanna actually work here someday, right? So, this is a great idea generation, as well as recruiting tool for fresh young minds that can come and be part of our, our city and our staff, so I'm super excited about that. I like the fact that, I believe we are a great community partner, so the fact that we're recognized for our service-minded innovation, I think really matters, because to me, how we actually harness the innovation to do public good is really important. So, I like that. And then, to Councilmember Stokes, I was excited to see that in the U-Dub website, all of these projects are on there, and my goodness, those reports, I started to read them, and they are pages upon pages of research and work that these students have done. So, I think that we might all sit with a cup of coffee someday and, and really read through some of these, because they are huge. And I would say that for me personally, I really liked the, the one about increasing language access, because I think that's one that we've been working on. The one about the budget book, you know, the book is this big, and if we want to understand what we care about, we look at where we spend our money. So, the more that the budget book is readable to, to the general public, I think that would be really helpful. So, I'm excited to read about that. I guess my question is, when we look at our six priority areas for the council, I noticed that there are projects in five of them, but not in transportation and mobility. So, is that because we do so much with PacTrans already, or, I just noticed that there were no projects tagged in that area?
Yes, and regional governance as well. In part of the over 50 projects that we did submit to the university, there were projects in those two areas. Part of this program is matching those faculty members to projects, so it was really just that there wasn't an alignment there before we hit the maximum of 30 projects.
Okay, so it's probably one of those where because we're already doing so much with the number of the transportation part, that it just didn't rise to that. And then, I guess my other question is, as we do more follow-up on these projects, I think one of the questions that did come in was, what about engaging with our own community so that it isn't just our staff and the, the college students working together, but it's also the, you know, is there a way to engage broader with our own community and getting their ideas into some of these projects? Or maybe boards and commissions might wanna help in some of these projects? So, I'm just wondering if that might be a possibility. I know that when we get more hands, it can take more time, and yet, my sense is that perhaps some of those groups would be really excited to be part of this process.
Right, and we, again, we sort of, we stepped into an existing program, is what we did. So, we, we utilized the Livable City Years program that they had, and followed their little, their recipe for what their success, what success is. Well, we added to that recipe and made it better, I'm pretty sure. But, yeah, so we just stepped into an existing program, and there was a time allotted time amount when you start, when you first are told about when you're gonna be, when you were selected for the project, or to go through the program, and the time you have to come up with your projects. So, adding in that layer of doing an additional outreach to some of the community could, could have been done, but it was pretty tight.
Okay, so, let me rephrase that. What I meant is, as we look forward with these 30 projects and potentially implementing them, perhaps there's an opportunity to leverage partnership with our community or boards or commissions. I don't mean looking backwards, I understand that this is an established process. Thank you.
I don't know how many cities have the privilege of working with a top university and their students' ideas, but this has been a great opportunity for our city as well, and I wanna thank you for choosing. And I want to thank you for choosing the city of Bellevue to work with. I'm curious as to what the next step is. You kind of, you and I spoke this morning about the implementation. So can you describe a little bit about how that relationship we've developed with your university and the program will continue?
Of course. So because we do have 30 very different and distinct projects, it looks different for each one of them. As I mentioned, there are a number that are continuing those relationships, which will just build upon the results that they already have. So say the, the fire department's partnership. But quite a few others, as Nancy mentioned, are working their way through really a process. So quite a few I know are waiting on the budget process to move forward into implementation. What we're working on now is a good way of tracking these projects as they move forward, so we can make this reporting much easier and just track for ourselves where they've gone. There are a number of projects as well that were just at one time, we just needed the information at that point, and then they haven't really moved any farther than that. But there are, there are mechanisms that we're exploring to continue to track them. And I think it really does depend in some areas on the, the scale of it. So whether it's a South Bellevue mini-city hall, will take more time than UAS policy, or continued conversations about a safe parking lot. So we'll continue to try to find a way across all of the different departments and project leads to, to get a better grasp on implementation.
Okay, great. Well, thank you so much for the presentation.
Thank you.
Oh, good. We're gonna hear about the demographics and the census.
You have the staff coming up to the table here. As you mentioned, we're giving, gave the council an update on some key demographic characteristics of Bellevue for 2020, with a focus on economic expansion, income equality, and in the community, as well as residential character. Joining us this evening is Emile King, our Assistant Director in the Community Development Department, and also from the department is Kate Nessie, our demographer, to Emile's right, as well as Gwen Russo, to her right, the Senior Planner on Community Development. In addition to hearing about some key demographic characteristics changes, we also will be providing the council an update on, on the continued outreach for the 2020 census. So Emile, I'll turn it over to you.
Yeah. Thank you, City Manager Miyake. Good evening, Mayor Robinson, Deputy Mayor Nguyen-House, and members of council. Tonight, staff are here for two primary reasons. First, we'd like to reaffirm, reaffirm the importance of using data in the work we do as professional staff here at the city. The staff you have before you are here tonight provide key information for our planning initiatives and programs, but also function as a essential resource for other city departments and outside groups as they do their work. The, the, the staff here tonight also provide a whole host of information for you, the council, as you're out in the public, doing presentations and interacting with the community that you serve. Secondly, we'd like to provide an update on the significant work we're accomplishing with community partners to ensure a complete count of our residents for the 2020 census. Tonight's meant to whet your appetite for more discussions to come, as we delve into important implications we can see from the data sets. We're also really looking forward to the results of the 2020 census that we'll get back next year. I'm gonna now turn things over to Kate Nessie. She's making her first official visit to council tonight. Last August, she joined the organization as our city demographer. Previously, she taught at Seattle Pacific University in their urban studies program. So with that, I'm gonna turn it over to Kate.
Thanks, Emile. So I'm gonna cover three topics tonight. I'm gonna talk about economic expansion, and I'm going to highlight one particular thing that we don't talk about very much, but I think is important to this city in particular. I'm gonna talk about the increasing income inequality, and I'm going to also talk about how residential character is changing in Bellevue neighborhoods. And then Gwen is going to update you on the city's efforts regarding the 2020 census outreach. As you probably know, a complete count is very important for the city, not only because of the dollars that we get and the representation in Congress, but also much of the data that I'm going to be presenting tonight is linked to the census count. And so if we have an accurate census count, then we have a, a way of making sure that the rest of the data is accurate as well. This presentation is for information only, no direction is required. But I look forward to hearing from you. Before I get into the three topics, I want to provide some context. So the US grew by 6% between 2010 and 2018, and our region grew by about twice that. The Puget Sound region received the ninth most new residents of any metropolitan region in the country. That's almost 3% of the total US growth, which is just phenomenal. Bellevue's also growing quickly. The, the city is somewhat ahead of the job target that we set in the 2015 comprehensive plan, and somewhat behind the, the housing target that we set. Individually, these differences are manageable, but taken together, this means that the city is causing more workers to live further away from the, the jobs in Bellevue. Lost my place. So, yeah, so we want to have a good mix of jobs and housing in, in, in the city, and not fulfilling the, the number of housing units that we wanted to have in the city, means that we're sort of not even maintaining the status quo, but actually exacerbating the, the, the issues. I want to focus on one particular segment of the workforce, the H1B visa holders. We have all witnessed that Bellevue has become increasingly diverse, and probably part of that is due to the H1B visa workers. It's a little bit hard to track, because H1V, these H1B visas are issued to the company, and they're issued at the company headquarters. So all H1B visas for Amazon in the entire US are, go through the Amazon headquarters in Seattle, which is why that is such a huge number. But if you look at the top four visa applicants in the state of Washington, they all have ties to Bellevue. And if you look at companies that are headquartered in Bellevue, including T-Mobile, that's almost 1,300 applications that were accepted in 2018. That doesn't link directly to the number of workers, because visas are, can be held between three and six years. But just looking at the number of applicants, that's a huge number. H1B visa holders often do not travel alone. They often have families. And those families, spouses in particular, come and they're not allowed to work in the, in the, in Bellevue. And so if you, if we look at the workforce that is not in the labor force, some parts, some segments look much different. So if you just look at men, the men that are not in the workforce in Bellevue look very similar to men that are not in the workforce throughout the region. But if you look at women, and in particular, women who are not citizens, they look very different. They tend to be much more educated than women that are not in the labor force throughout the region, which is another indication that we have a lot of H1B visa workers within Bellevue. When these spouses come, they accompany their spouse to, to this new country. They're often, don't have the, the social network that they, from where they came from. And so they can feel isolated, and their spouse often works at least 40 hours a week, and so they don't have their spouse to, to fall back on. So there is a lot of untapped human capital in the city that, that can't be employed in the formal economy because of immigration issues. I want to move on to the second topic, income inequality. Inequality has been increasing around the region, and it has been increasing in Bellevue as well. Each of the lines in this graph are the average income of 20% of households. So the 20% of the lowest-earning households are, are, is that dark blue line at the bottom, and then the second 20%, the average of the second 20% is the orange line, and so on. And you can see that all of these income groups increased over, since 2010, the, the income has increased on top of inflation. But what's really driving the income inequality is that the top 20% are increasing at a much, much faster rate than the, the bottom 20%. Focusing on those at, in the bottom 20%, and in particular, those living on less than full-time minimum wage, which is, if you work 1350 an hour, 40 hours a week, 52 weeks a year, you earn about $28,000 a year. Most of those households are not in the labor force. So 70% are not in the labor force, which means that their income is coming from transfer payments mostly. About 40% of households in this income bracket are headed by somebody over 65, so they're probably, you know, have Social Security and SSI and so on. But then the other 30% that are not in the labor force may be relying on disability or other transfer payments. I wanted to mention also that almost half of those households have more than one person in it. So if you think about one person living on $28,000 a year, then think about two people. So regardless of the city's reputation, there are many people and economic need in Bellevue. And affordability is an important consideration for people in the bottom 20% of the income range. Usually, you think that people should be spending about 30% of their income on housing or less. For somebody, for a household that has $28,000 a year, an income that works out to be about $700 a month. For people that are, for households that are under 30% of the median income for their family size, about 77%. Over three-quarters are housing cost burden, which means they spend more than 30% of their income on housing. The last area that I want to focus on is the changing residential character of the city. And although we haven't been meeting our housing targets, there has been remarkable growth in housing in Bellevue. However, that, that growth has been bifurcated. So if we look at multifamily housing, that has almost entirely been zero and one-bedroom homes. And if we look at multifamily housing, or if we look at single-family housing, that has been largely homes that are four bedrooms and more. And we've actually seen a decrease in family-sized housing, housing that has two and three bedrooms. A net decrease in the number of homes in that, in that range. It's interesting, a number of people ask me, well, does this mean that household size is increasing? But actually, average household size is, is, has decreased a little bit, which is not surprising, being a job center and having a lot of zero and one-bedroom homes. So that is really not, probably not what's driving the, the move toward these larger homes. I want to emphasize, however, that this is not uniform across Bellevue. The neighborhoods are very different in the type of growth, the type of housing change that they're experiencing. And so depending on where people live in Bellevue, they're going to have a very different perspective on what kind of change is happening. So with that, I want to turn it over to Gwen to tell you all about what the city's been doing for 2020 census.
Thank you, Kate. Well, so, it's a little bit of an abrupt switch, but that's okay. I know you guys have lots of questions for Kate, but I'll, I'll quickly go through the census. So in just a little over a month, the Census Bureau will be mailing out invitations to every single household in Bellevue. They'll be inviting them to go online for the very first time to fill out the census questionnaire. And you've heard tonight about all the great work that's being done in the community by our community partners. They are making sure that they're raising awareness amongst all of the people to help them understand why it's so essential for us all to participate. But I, I will admit that frankly, I am, I'm concerned, because this, this decade is different. There's a lot of just confusion about the census and concern over participation. And so what I'm noticing is that even people who have lived their whole lives here have sometimes forgotten about what, what the census is. You know, and they don't really remember filling it out. My neighbor who's 30 years old said he's never filled out the census before. When he was 20, he was in college, and before that, he was at home. And so people who have lived, you know, 30 years here in the United States haven't filled it out. However, here in Bellevue, we even have an additional challenge, which is that about 17% of our population moved to the United States since 2010, and have never experienced a census. And about 34,000 residents are not citizens. So there's a bunch of folks that might be confused about how to, you know, whether or not to participate, and how important it is. All right, so, let's see. In 2010, about 76% of the population self-responded to the census, which was a passing grade, but it's still a C, right? And Bellevue doesn't pride itself on being a C. So this time, I would like to challenge us to try and ace the census. It will take all of our efforts to make sure that we are trying to get 100, getting, getting an A on, on participation. In order for us, I'm, I'm hoping to actually get a C. So what this means is that, let's see, oh, I, I'm not, I'm forgetting our slideshow. Here's the great work from our, our community partners. They have done some amazing things on their websites, so please check them out as well. But the main thing that I'm wanting to remind you is that we have, we just have one more month before they start sending it out. So I'm gonna ask you to spend two minutes for two months, at every event that you go to, reminding people that 2020 is a census year, and that it's essential for people to participate.
Mr. City Manager, can we tell Brad Hardwood that, to include that in all our written comments?
Yeah. Yeah. Okay, sorry, I'm losing my place, too. But I like to think of it, just to help you remember things, there's three Ds for three Es. So the Ds are democracy. The census is the cornerstone of our democracy. It is what helps us allocate billions of dollars, that's the second D, across the country, federal dollars. And it is, it is the data that we rely on in order to make informed decisions. Informing our decisions allows us to make quality decisions that are effective, efficient, and equitable. All right, let's see. Try to be quick. Yeah, so just, again, the key messages. Oh, I, we've got a ton of brochures over there for you to take with you. But the main message our tagline is, is that everyone counts. Together we thrive. It's important to make sure that everyone knows that they need to participate. It takes only 10 minutes to answer 10 questions that will last 10 years. It will shape our investments in our community for that long. And then the other important message is to remind people that the Census Bureau is prohibited by law from sharing anyone's personal information with any other government agency. So the quality of our decisions and the amount of resources we have to shape investments in our community will depend on everyone's participation in the 2020 census. In order to make this happen, we do have resources on our website. This is a picture of one of our posters. We have a poster, we have a brochure, we'll have talking points, a sample newsletter, a sample email. I'm hoping to encourage our city manager to send one out. And so I'd like to encourage you not only to encourage others to participate in the census, but to encourage them to encourage others to participate in the census. So our businesses and all of our leaders, please encourage them to go online and use the the resources there to raise awareness among our community. And with that, I'd like to show you one of our favorites, our, our best resources, which we were so fortunate to have Councilmember Lee help us put together a census video. And so I think the lights are going to be pretty good. So here we go.
Hello, I'm double city councilmember Conrad Lee. I serve on East King County's 2020 Census Community Count Committee. Today, I want to talk to you about why it's so important for all Bellevue residents to take part and be counted in the 2020 census. The census counts every person living in our country. An accurate census is essential to determining how boundaries for local, state, and national elections are drawn. It ensures that each person is fairly represented in the state legislature and United States Congress. Census results also help determine how much funding Bellevue receives from the state and federal government each year. Over the past 10 years, the city of Bellevue and our residents have received millions of dollars based on the population count from the 2010 census. This funding was used to provide care and support for older adults through programs such as Medicaid, Medicare, and Meals on Wheels. It paid for essential programs for schools, youth centers, and health clinics. And millions of dollars more were used to improve Bellevue's transportation system. The census begins in 2020. Look for a postcard in the mail in March. It will invite you to fill out the census questionnaire. Responding to the census is fast and easy. You can respond online, by phone, or by mail. And remember, the U.S. Census Bureau is required by law to protect your answers and keep them confidential. Be counted in the 2020 census and help our community thrive. It's important, it's confidential, it's easy. To learn more, visit BellevueWA.gov/2020Census. Thank you.
Mayor Robinson, that, that concludes our staff presentation, so we're happy to answer any clarifying questions or ideas you might have for future data to come to council.
Okay, great, thank you so much. And I know that Councilmember Lee has worked very hard on the census. I know Councilmember Zahn has as well, so I'll start with Councilmember Lee.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. You know, I was just a pretty face. But I want to emphasize that this is a community effort. And I agree with Gwen completely. We don't want to get a grade of C or D. 17% of the people, or 76% people who self-report. So we're talking about 24%. And because of the recent immigrant, a lot of people like you mentioned that came to Bellevue since 2010. I want to make sure that, you know, this 24% non-represented is not acceptable. So it takes a community effort, takes a community effort to make this work. And I'm very happy that we saw earlier presentations by CISC, by IAWW. I think the community is working very hard to help out each of us. You know, you mentioned each one of us to have to get four, five, 10 people to make sure they report. It's awareness, it's education, it's helping them. And I think that really needs to be done. So I'm very proud to say, finally, lastly, that there are some young people from different communities that are working with their parents, with their friends' parents, in their schools, through their school clubs. So right there, we have two young persons sitting in the audience that are working very hard. They are working with the schools, they work with the Bellevue School District and other schools through social media, through Instagram, through all the ways that they can connect. And I, we know that in some communities, there's special social media they use, like the Chinese community, they use WeChat. And they can reach these folks, they can reach hundreds, if not thousands, of people. So I want to, maybe Gwen, you don't mind, to allow them to stand up and maybe to be recognized. Here we go. Say your name, introduce yourself, where you go to school, what grade are you in?
My name is Deepak. I'm a senior at Annapolis High School.
My name is Zhao Wei. I'm a junior at Annapolis High School.
Okay.
And we're both, we're both interns at Pathic Foundation. So basically, we're, a project that we're involved in, that we created, was the Census 2020 Outreach Project, where we're basically focused on reaching out to different communities that we decided that we could most impact. So the two communities that we decided were basically students and the schools and basically teachers, and Chinese Americans and the Chinese immigrant communities. And the three ways that we're doing those are through social media, by directly contacting these, like Lake Washington School District and Bellevue School District. And the third way is through attending these committees and complete count, like meetings and other committees, like CISC, we attended their meeting earlier this year, just to get more information, get contacts so that we can do what we want to do and make contact with people that we need to.
And some of them are signed up as trusted messengers.
Yes.
Which are the people that will follow up if they don't get a response from the folks. The Census Bureau would have a list of folks, and they are the people that will go out and talk to them in their languages, in their culture, which they're comfortable with. So you are the trusted messengers. Thank you.
Great, thank you so much, Councilmember Zahn.
Yeah, so I, I have talked to Councilmember Lee, he's been engaged in this work for quite a while and.
And making the video, I think that at the National League of Cities, he also participated in the video there as well to make sure that. I think one of the biggest challenges is when we say everyone counts, I think we can lose sight of the fact that we literally mean every single person. And so it's so important to educate and make aware that that includes everyone, including the H1B and folks that may think, oh, this is, this must only be citizens that need to be counted. And I do think there can be some confusion around, if you have college students, like I have two, do they get counted, you know, here or somewhere else? And so I think the more that we help people understand, the more important it is. That trusted messenger that Councilmember Lee talked about, I think is, is one of the really important pieces, especially for the communities that maybe right now have some fears around actually being counted and being seen. And so that confidentiality piece, I think is really important. I was on a panel at NLC talking about some of the things we're doing and hearing from some other cities. And those partnerships that they were talking about, whether it's with libraries, having some fun events at parks, where every single thing you do, that tagline of the 2020 census being part of it. So that may be another thing to think about is, you know, what are some other kind of fun things make this just pop in terms of a, you know, it's really cool to be counted? So I, I love what you're already doing, and I would just say, just keep doing that. Thank you.
Listen, can I add one more?
Yes.
One opportunity is that I want to make a plug for Wintergrass. They are having the event on February 20th, 23rd. This would be a great event for you to promote CONCensus 2020. And I really want to highlight them because they are a wonderful group, they have done a lot to the community. And the one important thing that they mentioned is, they have young musicians that are attracted and becoming very much engaged in bluegrass music. Imagine modern-day high school techies getting down to the earth and playing bluegrass. Very cool, that's the best one to you.
Okay.
For O'Gahn, I guess.
I guess I will just end on one thing I almost forgot, and that is.
That the info I got before, when I was getting ready for the panel, actually talked about the fact that over the last 10 years, we've received $76 million in federal and state funding. I think we need to amplify that message more, that when we say we're receiving money, we're literally talking about, right, millions of dollars. And I don't, I'm not sure that everyone understands that level of, of funding. I certainly didn't until I got the information from staff, so.
Great, yeah. Go ahead.
Well, I just want to mention, that was 76 just for transportation alone, and $112 million came to Bellevue School District over the past 10 years.
Oh, my goodness. Boy, that is essential.
Another good number.
Pack that up and put that even more. Oh, it's out there.
It's, it's in our brochure, which is right over there.
Great, thank you. I will take one.
Young people, how was that information? What we have to do is talk to them.
Councilmember Stokes, did you want to comment?
No, it's just great. I think this is a lot of big comments.
Councilmember Robertson.
No, it's all been said.
Okay, Councilmember Barksdale.
All right, thank you. Actually, I had the pleasure of getting this brief at our planning commission retreat last year, and we had some good discussion. I do have a couple of questions, and thank you for the good, the amazing presentation there. So a lot of this points to housing, which, you know, we already have a lot of, we have some programs in place and are, and are focused on, you know, addressing the missing middle and the jobs-housing balance, right? I mean, that's already a priority in our community. Income inequality, while housing is a big part of it, you know, it'd be great to understand, you know, what else is contributing to income inequality and sort of higher economic development plan will address some of those, some of that inequality in the community, if at all. And also just in general, where we could be doing more to address income inequality that where we're not providing that coverage currently.
Deputy Mayor Newenhouse.
Thank you. Great presentation. Conrad, I think you missed your calling. However, I think we need to take it up a notch and start doing some TikTok videos. I can see you being very popular on that platform. No, I just really.
I'll put my face on your body.
Okay. I opened up a cat and worms there, I'm sorry. You know, I really appreciate a lot of this, this, this great data here. And one thing that really struck me, just because it hit a, hit a personal chord as, as well, is about the H1B. And what really struck me, because I lived it, when my family first immigrated to this country, my mom, who was ICU and ER nurse, could not work. And that was incredibly frustrating for someone who went to school for many, many years, who, that was part of her identity. And thankfully, she found, well, first she had to raise two boys, so that took up some time for her time. But she was able to find other outlets and was actually able to volunteer at Overlake and other places. However, that's like an untapped community or even labor pool potentially for, for volunteer and other things. So this might be a little bit outside the scope of this, but I wonder, what else can we do to reach out, you know, during the time that we're reaching out for the census? Can we reach out and let them know that there are other ways that we can connect them to the community in, in whatever areas that might be of interest to them? You know, be it medical, be it tech, be it however, because as, as you rightly explained, it could be three, it could be six years before they might be able to, to, to work in this country. And, you know, trying to be such an inclusive community that, that we always strive to be, there are avenues that, that might be available to them to, to, to get connected. So I just wanted to throw that out there. But I really appreciate this, and I'd love to see some more data as it relates specifically to neighborhoods. If we, I don't know if we can drill down to that level for, rather than just from, from a city perspective. I mean, I do appreciate that from the, from the housing, but even like from, you know, again, maybe go back to the H1B, going back to some of the other household incomes differentials there, I really like to see that broken out by neighborhood if possible. I'm not sure you can get to that granular level, but, you know, I think there's going to be a big difference between East Bellevue versus downtown Bellevue, for example. So we would love to see that data if we can get to that level. But thank you so much for your work and for this presentation.
Great presentation, love the video, good choice, of stars. I think Councilmember Barksdale's comments on the, what we can do with the economic team to address some of the workforce needs that we have, especially with all these jobs coming, is really interesting. And I'd be curious as to know how many people have left the workforce to raise their families and now want to come back into it, and what it would take to get them back into some of these jobs that are coming into town. And then I had a question on page 10. You talked about 45% of households with total income under full-time minimum wage support more than one person. How many of those are retirees on fixed income, do you think? I would have to find that specific statistic, so I, I'm not sure. I know about 40% of the total number of households are 65 and older, but I suspect that many of them are single-person households, so I don't know exactly, but I could find it out. I'd be curious if you wouldn't mind. Okay, thank you very much. Yes, you may.
Because we're just brought up as part of the subject of the demographic study. Appreciate Councilmember Barksdale brought it up, and you follow up with this untapped human potential, which is the families, spouses, who are overqualified but no jobs with restrictions. And that creates a lot of family problems. Besides housing income inequality, you know, pressure, and that's very much of a, you know, mental stress. And there's organizations here locally, that's, they address people who are abused, you know, family members, it's because of those situations. So I believe that there's something that we have a good number, I'm really glad that you showed them, and that points out to the importance of looking at them, even though maybe at the local level, we may not be able to readily to address it indirectly. But however, I think that's an issue we need to talk about, human capital untapped, what do we do with them? I think that's a really important question. I think in general, you mentioned, you know, it's untapped potential and tapped human capital. So I think we need to keep that in mind, use that data, and then maybe develop something, we can continue some discussion. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Yes, okay, thank you very much. Great presentation. We're going to take a break until 7:40. We'll regroup here. Back to order. And now we're going to get a presentation on the Well Kept Program.
Yes, thank you, Mayor and Councilmembers. Just a little background, the Well Kept Program is a summer youth employment opportunity offered through the Parks Natural Resources Division. It actually stands for KEPT, stands for Kids Environmental Project Training. And today, we're going to get an update on this program. It has been in place since 1987. And tonight, joining us is Curtis Kukal, the Parks Manager, as well as Jeff Bradley, the Natural Resources Manager, and they both work for the Parks and Community Services Department. And I guess I'll turn it over to you to, to kick off the presentation.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Miyaki. And thank you, Mayor Robinson, and Deputy Mayor Newenhouse, and council for allowing us the opportunity to come and talk about the Well Kept Program. As Mr. Miyaki said, it's, it's housed within the Natural Resource Division, and I'm the Natural Resource Manager, Jeff Bradley, and with me is, is Curtis Kukal, is a park ranger, and he's the guy who actually runs the program and makes it work too. So I'm going to talk a little bit about the Natural Resource Program, and then I'm going to turn it over to Curtis and really talk about the Well Kept Program. So there is, this is for information only, there is no direction required from council. And this is how the program's going to work. Again, I'll talk a little bit about the Natural Resource Division and how this is housed, and then turn it over to Curtis, and he'll talk about the Well Kept Program, a little bit about the program overview, the mission and goals, and then some of the education workshops and projects that we've completed in 2019. So with a little bit of background, the Natural Resource Division, although it is a, you know, operation and maintenance division of the Parks Department, it's really a lot more than that too. And, and really, it's, it can be thought of as, there's five major programs, and each of them really can't stand alone. And, and really, they work synergistically to provide, you know, holistic level of service and stuff to manage all the natural resources. And it really starts with our Forest Management Program. And this is, manages the over 2,000 acres of natural area, so the wetlands and the forests, and ensures that we have a healthy forest for present and future generations. And that also, to get people out there, that's what's so important about our Trails and Greenway Program, because if we can't get people out and enjoy these things, it's harder to build support for them. And, and trails, you know, I would argue it's the most widely-used recreational facility that we have within the Parks Department. Next is our Streetscape and Arterial and Landscape Program. And this is funded through the Transportation Department. When they build CIP projects, they hand over the maintenance of it to the Parks Department. So we maintain that, and much like the trails, you know, connect the, the parks, the streetscapes really connect the arterial landscapes and the traffic as well too. And, and I'll argue that it kind of makes Bellevue a city in a park. And when you're driving down and you see our beautiful street trees and arterial landscapes, it sets us above from other communities. And along with that is our Water Conservation Irrigation Program, and plants need water. And along with that is our Water Conservation Irrigation Program, and plants need water. And the Water Conservation Irrigation Program ensures that it's delivered in a very efficient manner. So, we have a Maxicom central control and, and IQ programs, and they ensure that, too. And last but not least is the Nature Park and Visitor Center Program. And this is really integral to, to everything coming together, because the Parks Department manages, we own about maybe 10% of the land, and if we can't get the 90% of the other landowners to do the right thing as well, too, it makes it even more challenging to manage the resources that we're managing. So, it's really our outreach and involvement program. So, it includes things like the Environmental Education Program, our three visitor centers, our Community Gardens and Farms Program, the volunteer program that we have, the park rangers, and last but not least is the Well Kept Program. And I'm going to turn it over to Curtis, and he's going to talk a little bit more about the specifics of the program.
Thank you, everybody. My name's Curtis Kukal. I am a park ranger with Bellevue Parks and Community Services. Part of my role is also environmental programs coordinator, and so we do, Well Kept is one aspect of some of the environmental outreach and education that the park rangers do. This will be the seventh year that I've coordinated the Well Kept Program for the city of Bellevue, and I want to just thank you all for taking the opportunity to let us speak a little bit more about the program and some of the work that we're doing. So, as Mr. Miyaki said, this, the, the program is, Well Kept stands for Kids Environmental Project Training. For over 30 years, the Bellevue Parks and Community Services Department has hired Bellevue teens to do work within the park system and to gain real-world job experience as a first job opportunity. It's a paid summer internship. This program doesn't require many qualifications. It largely focuses around availability, interest, and enthusiasm. The program incorporates environmental education into the work that we do in the park system itself, providing services for the city and our park guests. Each crew, each work crew is composed of 10 student interns, their ages 14 to 18, and then two supervisor crew leads that work and oversee their day-to-day activities. I act as hiring manager and logistics coordinator, making happen person. Some years, given funding availability and project need, we can run two programs, so that's 20 student interns and four crew leads. Selection priority is heavily geared towards Bellevue residents, and again, we also strongly consider availability and enthusiasm for the environment and their summer schedule. Kind of the timeline of the program, the kids start just after school finishes, so that's usually, depending on the year, end of June, beginning of July, 4th of July holiday sometimes throws a strange wrench in there. But they go for eight weeks until the second to the last Friday of August. The two supervisors begin second week of June, and they go for 12 weeks. That allows us to do training with them, safety orientation, you know, preparing tools, coordinating projects, and then it gives us time afterward to, you know, tally project results and administrative tasks. And for, like I mentioned, priorities given to Bellevue residents, if you're a Bellevue teen and you have reasonable availability and meet the minimum requirements of the position, there's, I'd hazard over 95% chance of getting into the program when we have two crews. So, the program mission is to provide youth employment opportunities in the field, field of park resource management, focusing on job skills and career development training to build strong self-esteem, good work habits, and sound environmental ethics. I've been approached by parents before of some of these kids who've said, "I'm really excited to see how this goes. I've never seen him sweat before." And I can tell you that most of the Bellevue Well Kept trainees come into the program never, never using a shovel, pushing a wheelbarrow, or working outside when the temperature gets much above 85. As far as the program goals, obviously, a major goal is to provide quality and efficient services for the city of Bellevue park-going guests. In tandem with that, we provide job skills training and career development training, seminars, and try really hard to invite, instill sound environmental ethics. Some of these kids will go on to develop an interest in the environment, not all will, and we want all of the kids and bring home to their parents a strong sense of, of what is civic responsibility with, with respect to the environment. So, depending on the week, once or twice per week when the kids are, are working for us, we do educational workshop and seminars with them. These focus on two main areas. One would be professional and life skills, what Mike colloquially will call adulting. So, that would be things like, you know, interviewing skills, mock interviews. We bring in someone from the city's finance department to do a budgeting and personal finance presentation with them, teaching about college debt, that kind of thing, resume and cover letter workshops. And so, then on the other end of things, we, we're really interested in teaching them, what does a career in the natural resources look like? And specifically, how are Bellevue's natural resources, within the parks especially, how are those managed? It's, it's one thing to kind of, you know, think about, you know, Earth Day or recycling, but it's really another thing for, you know, a 15-year-old kid to get to participate in managing an urban forest. So, we'll bring in city staff and some outside organizations as well to lead those seminars. Similarly, our projects also fall into three main categories. Our Bellevue Parks and Community Services manages about 90 miles of trails within the, within the city, and part, partially, we do trail renovation and maintenance projects. Sometimes, we will build new trails from scratch. We've done that a couple of different years. Excuse me. So, a renovation project could include things like widening a trail, adding retention pole work, adding new and improved surfacing, and then things like drainage. Then the, another big type of project that we do with the kids are urban forest management projects. Because of the time of the year, that generally tends to be non-native noxious weed removal work. We do some limited planting projects during the summer, but obviously, biologically, that's not the best time of the year to install plants without lots of irrigation. Our projects, we coordinate, starting kind of about now, with the various teams that are in charge, that have responsibilities, so the Greenways and Trails Team and the Forest Management Team. We look at where can these kids be effective and what would be useful for those teams? So, you know, these kids aren't able to operate chainsaws or herbicides, that kind of thing. So, we're, we try our best to find where they can really be useful and where many hands can contribute to the, to the park system. And then the third category of, of projects that we frequently do would be kind of other projects as a sign, and that would be things like blueberry farm maintenance, fence maintenance, and those, those are generally limited. The, the majority of our time is spent on trail and forest management work. So, this is some of the highlights of the work that we did in 2019. This is not all of the parks that we worked in, but taken together, our forest management work, we did about 19,500 square feet of invasive species removal work. That's about half an acre if you were to lump it all together, and that was spread over several parks around the city. And, and again, that's removing non-native and noxious weeds that threaten the, the urban We worked a lot within Coal Creek Natural Area, renovating over a mile of hiking trail. That trail was widened. We added a new durable gravel trail surfacing to it, and then we added retention pole work. Last year, either last year or the year before, the, the kids built from scratch a new hiking trail connection. And then this year, we also were, we did trail maintenance on 34,000 feet of trail within the city, which is about six and a half miles. So, the program leads to outcomes that are certainly beneficial for the city, things like improved mobility, you know, making trails that are safer, making trails that connect, that have important connections that community members can use, not just outdoor recreation is, but folks that are just wanting to get around Bellevue. We improve the safety of the trail system, we, and we contribute to the vibrancy of the natural areas. You know, left unchecked, these, the native, the non-native plants that, that the Well Kept Team and the Natural Resource Division manages threaten the ecological stability of those forests. So, the, you know, talk to anybody who lives near a greenbelt, and they have very strong love generally for that space that's behind their house. Again, we wanted to thank you guys for taking the time to hear a little bit more about the program. I wanted to end just on a note of one of our success stories. So, we hired a gal in 2014 named Mary, who, she was, had certainly had interest in the environment when we hired her. After the program ended, she went and took advantage of a program offered by one of Bellevue's programming partners, the Pacific Science Center at, at the Mercer Slough. She joined their Lake Watershed, Lake Washington Watershed Internship Program and then worked for them in their summer camps. We then hired her back as a Well Kept Supervisor. She attended Western Washington University and studied environmental science, and she actually just entered the environmental workforce for Earth Corps, doing environmental restoration work in Puget Sound. So, not everybody that does this program will be Mary, but we certainly get to, get to try at them, and we certainly get to foster natural interest and enthusiasm amongst the kids. So, again, thank you for your time and happy to field any questions.
Great, thank you for the presentation. Councilmember Robertson is former liaison to the Parks Board. Do you have any comments or questions?
Sure, no, I just think this is a terrific, terrific program, and I love the example of an alumni, and I bet alumnis to this, to this program have done a lot of things. How much do they get paid?
So, it's minimum wage, and that goes up a little bit every year, so what are we, 1350 this year?
Sure, 1350 an hour. Okay, because it's at a paid internship, so I was like, oh, I wonder what they get paid. So, that wasn't in there, it, it's not on the website either.
Sure, well, when we put, this, this position gets posted, like any other city position, and we work with, a lot with the high schools and their counseling staff, and obviously, we're quick to tell them what they will get paid at that point.
Of course, because that's very important to these kids. But, no, I think it's a great program, and I encourage any youth to apply for it. I mean, if you, I bet they work really hard and they learn to appreciate the weekend when they have days off. Thanks.
Councilmember Stokes, any comments or questions?
Yeah, I think it's a fantastic program, and it's, reminds me of the stuff I did in my youth in scout camp and other things, and this is even more organized, it's really great. How many crews do you have?
This year, we're anticipating two work crews, so two, two crews of 10 each.
Yeah, so what do you think your capacity is, what, if you had your brothers?
Well, capacity, we, we are somewhat limited in the number of teens that have availability to do this. Kids are pulled in many different directions, and I'd say, you know, again, this isn't something that requires a lot of experience on behalf of the kids, but it is, it, it does require that they can come, it's only an eight-week program. So, I, I guess I don't have a great answer for that, but we're, we're limited, not just by our own staff's capacity, but by available workforce.
Yeah, I think really what we try to do is not turn any kids away, right? So, if we have more, more requests to be in there, we can take renovation dollars, and we've done this in the past, too, from trails, and use that to supplement to fund another crew, too. So, we've never really had probably more, we've never had more than two crews, but we've had two crews quite a bit, too. And so, again, what we try to do is offer the opportunity for every Bellevue resident who wants to be in it.
Yeah, 20 is a lot, yeah, but, yeah, that's great. Do you get any funding outside of the city for some of these programs, for this program?
Sometimes. This year is, we actually are working on an agreement with King County right now to, to hopefully fund a program to, you know, add some trails in Coal Creek. That agreement isn't finalized yet right now, but, you know, any chance we have to try to leverage resources, you know, and we, we go after it, too, so.
Well, I'd like to talk to you about King Conservation District possibilities, so let me do that.
Yeah, King Conservation District. I don't think we've ever used funds from King Conservation District to actually fund the Well Kept Program.
Yeah, not since I knew, we have others, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
Great, councilmember Zahn.
Yeah, I think this is great. Seems like it's a, it is a well-kept program that we want to keep going, and I love the fact that we're talking about, right, instilling environmental ethics and a love of our environment and our forest and, and nature. I did, I was curious about how many of the youth are returning? So, do they, do they just come for one summer and they do something else, or do we get repeaters?
That's, that's the way the program is designed. So, we generally have a good number of folks applying that we'd rather they get a chance to do this for the first time, first as well, so, yeah.
Okay, and then, when I think about this, I guess one, one of the questions I have is, does this feed into the broader youth internship program? So, when I think about, right, the summertime, we have other youth that are in other departments, are there some gatherings so they can see each other, which means that if they're working for the park side, they also can, you know, periodically have a barbecue or meet some other students, or how does that work?
It's not something we've done since I've led the program, but I, I can tell you we're, they work six hours a day, and we're, we're very, between transportation and, you know, stretching and, and actually trying to get the projects done that we'd like to do and the, the workshops, there actually is not a ton of time, so we, we're always trying to be mindful of actually providing value for the projects that we're working on. But it's, it's not something we've done, but.
Well, maybe it's something to think about, whether there's a way for, to create more of that connection so that this Well Kept is, is also broader. And then my other question is, do you think about also maybe partnering with a school like Big Picture where, not just in the summertime, but there's an opportunity to offer connection with youth that maybe as part of their, their high school experience, they could be doing some of this work and either when they're 14 to be in the program, or when they're 17 or 18, actually potentially being a lead in that? So, just a thought.
Well, I think our volunteer program is a really good opportunity that, that we do to outreach to provide those opportunities during the school year, too. So, we have various different ways that we outreach with our volunteer program, and one of them being our Stewardship Saturdays program, which allows youth to come in, and we do the same type of projects, right? Except for sometimes in the fall and the winter, they're kind of more fun because they're planting instead of pulling blackberry and everything, too.
Well, that's why I was thinking that, that if we were not in the, not only in the summertime, in addition to that, there might be that opportunity to be, because I, I think as much as, right, we, we might get some satisfaction out of pulling that ivy that just grows like weeds, planting trees is also quite satisfying.
Yeah, we, to, to Jeff's and, and your point, councilmember, yeah, we, we host volunteer projects year-round, and we've actually worked with Bellevue Big Picture School and several other local schools on volunteer projects. And a lot of those, like, for example, Open Window School, we've had a multi-year relationship with them, and they come back again and again. So, we do, they just don't, don't get paid for their efforts.
Yeah, yeah, no, I think it's, all the stuff that we do is amazing, so thank you.
Councilmember Lee.
Thank you. I, I really appreciate, you know, what you're doing. The program goals I'm looking at, youth skill development, service delivery, diversity and team building, plus environmental education. I think especially, you know, I'm sure you are doing a lot of other things that develop some of those skills. You know, this is probably just one of them, and this one probably emphasizes on environmental education, hands-on. I think that's very important. And I always complain that I never had really too much of a natural hands-on experience because I grew up in a jungle city, Hong Kong. It's all skyscrapers and concrete. So, this is good for kids, especially today, even young people today, they're so tied to study, study academics, you know, they miss, I think, lack some of the understanding of working with nature. That's why Bellevue has this Kelsey Creek Farm, you know, this working with animals and nature. I think this is a really great program. And you guys have so many parks, Kelsey Creek Park, Lewis Creek Park, and all that stuff. So, there's a lot of opportunity, and this, I think, is obviously one of them, right? So, I'm sure you appreciate that councilmembers asking, how do you integrate all of them together? So, this is just one, and I like this, especially when you pay minimum wage, it's almost as good as the council salary. I might volunteer to do that, just to accompany my pay. Unfortunately, I'm probably too old to qualify. So, anyway, so I, I think it's very good, and in fact, I have a granddaughter now who's got interested in environment. She was thinking about going to a summer program to learn environmental camp, you know, so maybe I can send her over to you. Thank you. Good job. Good job.
Councilmember Bergstiel.
So, thanks for the work that you're doing. I actually grew up on a farm, so I appreciate the tactile work and have done some cleanup of blackberries in the past, so I know it's hard work. Just curious about how, so you mentioned outreach, and I don't remember if it was for the volunteer program or for this program, and I know you work through, work with the schools. Are there other ways that you're reaching out in the community to get the word out about this program?
Yeah, the schools are a major one, but, yeah, we work with, we, I've got a mile-long contact list with lots of organizations, Boys and Girls Club, I'd have to, I'd be happy to provide you a longer list, but we also, it's been going for over thirty years, so there's a substantial word of mouth now that parents and teachers know about it. But, yes, we do a outreach blitz to get this, to get the word out there, because we want as many kids as possible to know about the program.
Awesome. And you had mentioned one of the barriers was availability of the students. Can you talk a little bit more about availability? I mean, is there like road trips and summer vacations, or is there other types of availability issues?
Yeah, it's pretty, yeah, it's anecdotal on my, as the, you know, hiring person on this, but, you know, they, there's camps, there's sports, there's vacations, there's a million other poles on the kids, and, you know, a lot of pressure on them to build the college resume and that. So, yeah, it comes down to, you know, they've got to be able to be here for our training. The program's only eight weeks, you know, saying I can come every other Tuesday and every third Wednesday, just, it doesn't, you know, doesn't work with the program structure. So, I guess that's kind of what I'm getting at.
Got it. One last question. Okay. Partnerships, what other orgs are we partnering with? I mean, we got REI coming, very outdoors-focused, we have some nonprofits and so forth that are doing environmental work. Are we partnering with other organizations?
Yeah, I mean, we've done a lot of stuff with Expedia, I know that too, through like our volunteer program. I'm trying to think of some other people. REI, obviously, we're really in, talking with REI quite a bit right now, is, you know, what do you guys want to do? How can we help, where's, how can we best fit you into what we do too? So, that's a big one. I, I think we're always open, you know, to talk to businesses, and that's one of my, one of my biggest, you know, kind of direction has been, hey, let's get more businesses in this. And what we did do with that is, you know, we have our Stewardship Saturdays, then we created what's called Eco Fridays, and that is kind of primarily focused at businesses who want to, you know, work together as a group, you know, as a cohesive group for team building and stuff, to offer those guys opportunities as well too, so.
I mean, I, in addition, I think some mentoring opportunities as well for that program.
Yeah, yeah, that's a great idea.
Thanks.
Deputy Mayor Newenhouse.
So, thanks for the great presentation. Just a couple of quick questions. So, first of all, for all the moms and dads that are watching right now, want to know exactly when the application date is. When do you officially post to the website and when do they have to apply by?
Yes, thank you, and I actually skipped, glazed over that.
That's okay, that's why I'm asking the question.
So, the timeline for the program, we're actually working on hiring requisitions right now, and the program will post pretty quickly thereafter, and then we hire on a rolling basis. So, you know, we definitely recommend that folks have their kids apply as early as possible. And then, I believe the last date to apply is May 31st of this year, or until filled though. So, it's really good to apply sooner rather than later.
Absolutely.
And that posts on the city's website with, like, just like any other job as well.
Great. And can they reapply if they've gone through the program once before, or can they, can they do it a second time or a third time? Do you allow that or not?
They can. Now, what we're trying to do is get, reach as many kids as possible, right, to give them an opportunity. So, Curtis has developed a quite extensive matrix on how he evaluates the kids that get in there, and one of the things is, hey, if you haven't done it before, you get a two points rather than a one point too. So, they can go through it again, but again, we like to try to reach as many kids as we can.
No, that makes sense, and that's fair. I just want to really appreciate, because I believe the Blueberry Farm Maintenance, was that around Larson Lake last year?
I think we were in Mercer Slough this year.
Oh, is that Mercer Slough? Okay, okay. Well, that's great, and I appreciate, I had the Lake Hills Greenbelt there, which we walk through all the time, the cleaning up there of the different blackberries and thistle and whatnot, so great job there. Thank you.
Well, I think everybody's asked the question and comment that I would say, except that I am a beneficiary of all this work, because I use the trails all the time, and they're just wonderful, and I'm always noticing new maintenance and new paths and more bark and, and when a tree comes down, it's never there more than twenty-four hours, or a limb comes down across the path. So, thank you for all your work. It's just remarkable what an asset this is for the whole community, and it's, you know, you don't have to pay extra to enjoy these trails, and I think just about anybody, where you work or where you live is walking distance to a park, a trail or an open space, and that's remarkable. So, thank you.
Great. Thanks for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we have one more item. We're going to do our fourth quarter update for Economic Development.
Good evening, Mayor, office and councilmembers. This is the, as you mentioned, the fourth quarter update for 2019. Just wide background, you have been receiving these quarter updates on economic development since the begin, since we began implementing the plan back in the first quarter of 2015. The last one you received was in October of 2019. Joining us this evening is Jesse Canuto, Canado, our Chief Economic Development Officer, as well as Philly Marsh, our Economic Development Manager, both from the Community Development Department. And with that, I'll go ahead and turn it over to you, Jesse.
Thank you, City Manager Miyaki, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, members of council. We're looking forward to tonight's presentation on staff's activity around economic development for the fourth quarter of 2019. Tonight's presentation is a routine update on staff's activities and includes both a year-in-review and also a plan-wide review elements as well. It is information-only and no particular direction is required tonight. In terms of agenda, we'll do a year-in-review and a recap of some of the elements of implementing the 2014 plan, talk about our business recruitment work, our business retention and expansion work with existing local companies, our work to support small business and entrepreneurs, recap of some of our partnership activities, and also outline what is coming in Q1 and Q2 of this year. As a brief reminder, tonight's discussion is on work implementing the 2014 plan. We are working on the update to the plan, and we will be back to council with an initial briefing on conceptual policies for that plan on February 24th. In terms of the 2014 Economic Development Plan, it included six foundational strategies that are handled by many departments across the city, including development services and transportation, as well as outside partners like the Chamber and the Downtown Association. It included four direct strategies and sixteen action items that are the direct work of ED staff and include, are the major focus of tonight's update. First, we would like to set the context for tonight's presentation, give a quick update on some of the economic development trends affecting Bellevue and its market fundamentals. Since 2012, we've added nearly nineteen thousand jobs, or approximately two thousand seven hundred per year. We do expect that to accelerate by about fifty percent, based on Amazon's announcements last week, to an average of about four thousand jobs per year through about 2024. The increased demand for space in Bellevue is reflected in our rising rental rates, which increased eleven point six percent last year to an average rate of about fifty-eight point thirty, fifty-eight dollars and thirty-two cents in downtown. Those numbers are great for our property owners and brokers, lots of additional revenue and profits. It does continue to present a cost challenge for our startups and our small businesses, including one that we talked to just today, which did decide to become a one-hundred percent virtual office due to the escalating costs of rental rates in downtown. Over the last two years, as we do a recap of all of the projects that we've worked at, worked with and looked at over the last couple of years, we do see that transportation options and that amenity continues to be a key location factor for businesses. We've seen the majority of investments and job growth happen in downtown and along Bell Red, reflecting this, the region's investment in the light rail line in those areas. When we've talked with companies about opportunities in areas like Factoria and Eastgate, there is significantly less interest, so it does reinforce that the region's decision to invest in the light rail line in Eastlink is paying dividends for Bellevue. In terms of a year-in-review for items more closely related to our work implementing the Economic Development Plan, 2019 was a year of transitions and refreshes in many parts of our ecosystem. On the staff side, we welcomed a new P3 manager to develop public partnership programs for the city, and welcomed Philly to help with our business assistance work. Four years after it was announced, Expedia did officially move out of Bellevue and over to Seattle. I'm happy to say that when I arrived in 2015, many thought that might be the doom and gloom for Bellevue's economic development potential, but we clearly see that economic development continues at a fast clip, and we have replaced all of the jobs that Expedia has moved over to the Interbay neighborhood. In terms of our partners, Greater Seattle Partners became a fully stood-up regional economic development group that has been supporting us on our job, our business recruitment work. The city expanded its partnership with the Downtown Association to bring life to the Grand Connection route through downtown. Visit Bellevue unveiled its new tourism-focused brand, which you can see the logo on the presentation, and began developing new concepts for more experiential opportunities for our visitors. So, it was a year of lots of growth and also growing our maturity for service delivery across many areas, both inside the city and with our partners. As we look at our work implementing the business recruitment and the business retention aspects of the 2014 plan, we see that the city consistently performed in many of the key metrics that we set out at the beginning of the plan. We did retain a sizable, grow a sizable number of jobs with our existing employers and did recruit a small number, though with the vanishing amount of space available in the city, it did become more of a challenge to recruit bigger employers into the city. So, the city's business assistance work over the last five years has really helped to grow Bellevue's brand as a business-friendly community, and it has also reinforced the city's reputation as being a solution-oriented place and focused on high-quality customer service. Those are areas we continue to get high marks from in our business engagement.
Great. So, as Greater Seattle Partners becomes more established, we're increasingly partnering with them on recruitment efforts. We hosted nine businesses from Japan in November. Thank you, City Manager Miyaki, for your welcome to the delegation. And through our Innovation Triangle Partnership, One Redman led a delegation of twenty-two CEOs from India. The delegation visited other U.S. and Canadian cities, and partnering with One Redman, they did an excellent job of making sure their experience here in our region was superior to the rest. And thank you, Mayor Robinson, for welcoming that delegation their second day at GIX. In June, the city of Bellevue attended Select USA, a global trade attraction event led by the U.S. Department of Commerce, and through the Innovation Triangle Partnership, Bellevue attended together with the Greater Seattle Partners as well as the state of Washington. The event resulted in twenty-one meetings with global firms and investors that we are continuing to follow up with.
And in terms of Select USA, we do want to note that it is an area that we are evaluating with our partners. In the last several years, we've attended the annual conference in DC, and we see a tremendous amount of interest from leads and prospects, but the return in terms of getting those companies to actually open their offices in Bellevue has been a much smaller progression and much slower progression than we expected. So, in terms of making sure that we are investing the city's time and resources in an appropriate manner, we are evaluating the, the structure of that opportunity going forward. Also of note, for our global recruitment efforts, in 2019, Bellevue was recognized by FDI Intelligence as one of the American Cities of the Future. We wanted to make sure to highlight this for council because it is a very big deal. FDI Intelligence is a part of the Financial Times Group, which over, which covers business-related news and the economy worldwide. It's a trusted source of information for senior decision-makers at companies globally and for economic development consultants around the world. They track companies' expansion plans, capital flows, individual regions, areas of strength and economic clusters, and other metrics that help site selectors and companies make their location decisions. So, Bellevue was ranked fourth in two categories by FDI Intelligence, economic potential and the overall category. It's also important to note that several of our benchmark cities for the updated ED plan were also recognized, as well as several other areas that we continually benchmark ourselves against. So, it was a big win for Bellevue in terms of global business attraction and positioning Bellevue in the global market. A little bit closer to home, work continues to support our existing Bellevue employers, both large and small. Over the course of 2019, we met with twenty-eight companies, twenty-one of which we classified as small businesses. Ten in particular were classified as women or minority-owned businesses, and five were local creative businesses. So, as we prepare our work throughout the year, we do try to sprinkle in an appropriate number of visits with different types of companies, particularly those that are either small, women, minority-owned and local. Several that were of note in 2019 were our work with Basta Boatlifts, a company off of Richards Road, and we, our work to help them ease some of their anxiety about working with the city to make improvements to their, their facilities, as well as companies like Off Zero, which are, one of their primary asks was help us connect with the local arts community, because we have, we want to be engaged with the artists, have murals in our space and know where to tap into the, the creative side. So, it's, it's a wide gamut of services that we provide to our business community. Staff also spent time working with our major employers.
Yes, so we're continuing our efforts to provide excellent customer service and coordination across internal departments to assist companies with streamlined and proactive growth in the city. We assisted T-Mobile with their new Eastgate campus that includes eight hundred and fifty jobs, and we continue to have routine meetings to assist with them on growth in their transportation solutions. We are happily helping REI with preparations for their headquarter move to the Spring District, scheduled for this June, and back in October, we worked with internal city department staff and parks. Curtis, who you heard from right before, joined us. Transportation, neighborhoods, as well as our friends at Visit Bellevue to attend and share information about our city at an REI meet and greet event. And I'm happy to share that almost everyone we spoke to was really excited about the move to Bellevue, so that was great to hear from the employees and their excitement. With Amazon's expansion plans, we continue to proactively lead and participate in citywide coordination efforts across city departments to assist with their disciplined and graceful growth in Bellevue. Last year, we took senior staff to see the Denny Regray neighborhood in Seattle, where Amazon has a large presence, where the spheres are located, and we also welcomed Amazon to Bellevue for a tour of the Grand Connection to discuss placemaking and community activation ideas. And then, lastly, another Spring District pioneer, Facebook continues to, with their phase expansion into Block 24, which is two hundred thousand square feet, that was announced back in August, as well as Block 6, which is three hundred and twenty-five thousand square feet, announced in November. So, excited to see them grow and continue to invest in that new district. Moving into some of our small business assistance and results, in 2019, Startup 425 had a successful spring foundation series, and then, based on high demand, we also held a fall series. As a reminder, the foundation series is six courses covering business ideation, business plans, marketing, financing, structure and licensing, as well as networking, and it's really the base foundation of what you need to know to start a business. While the full spring series had over twelve hundred registrants, the abbreviated fall series saw over three hundred. Sixty-seven percent were women, twenty-one percent are not currently employed, and we continue to see diversity with the participants. We also continue to hear great feedback, with eighty-eight percent reporting the workshops were extremely or very helpful. And what's really great to see is the range of business ideas participants are launching. In Bellevue's fall series, I attended, participant ideas ranged from restaurants to daycares, some really cool, unique services and experiences, as well as the high-tech startups that are spitting off from our tech talent in the area. On the first day, when participants went around the room to introduce themselves, one participant described her as a retiring mom, and then, it was cool to see a few others echo that same sentiment, and then see them throughout the courses have these amazing ideas and get just so excited about how to turn those ideas into reality. And then, also in the fall, there was a pilot program of offering a Small Business Essentials program that was run out of Cowork Box here in Bellevue. Essentials was designed to provide a more in-depth coverage than the foundation series, and they had smaller class sizes with about six to seven attendees per workshop, and there was also a small fee that was tested of fifty dollars per workshop. But, what's neat to see is that a hundred percent of the respondents to the survey gave an overall rating of either very good or excellent. So, that was kind of one little test into how we might be able to iterate and build upon the foundation series, which leads to the Startup 425. Which leads to the Startup 425 recommendations. Startup 425 started operations about three years ago as a partnership of the five largest cities on the east side, Bellevue, as well as Kirkland, Isocua, Redmond, and Renton, and it was designed to support entrepreneurs and small businesses. So after a few successful iterations of the Foundation Series, the partner cities wanted to examine how the program might be able to further support small business and entrepreneurship. So around this time last year, partner cities formed an advisory committee comprised of some business owners, entrepreneurs, investors, consultants, and economic empowerment specialists and to assist with the development of recommendations for a five-year plan. And this effort surveyed and identified the service gaps that exist on the east side and how Startup 425 might be able to address those gaps through some expanded programming. So the advisory committee developed primary and secondary initiatives to enhance the program over the next five years, and these can potentially inform and align with the small business strategies and Bellevue's economic development plan efforts that are going on. So the first primary initiative is to enrich and expand Startup 425 business curriculum, and this includes not only providing those enriched courses that respond to the needs of businesses based on their size and age, but also providing course content in culturally diverse formats, as well as providing curriculum in more accessible formats, moving it online and in virtual formats. Another primary initiative is to explore a variety of partnerships with the collaborative business spaces that we have on the east side and bring the curriculum to those spaces, as well as a membership program, which would entail creating a virtual membership to improve accessibility of the Startup 425 services, provide access to online courses, provide customers with options of making virtual connections with mentors, as well as access to the ecosystem and knowledge base of various resources that are out there. And then some secondary initiatives that were developed include business ecosystem building. So how can we provide clients with greater resources and opportunities to improve their businesses through making connections with similarly situated entrepreneurs, experts, as well as organizations? As well as recruit and retain additional mentors with the emphasis on diversifying the mentor pool? And also connect entrepreneurs with further, or with future employees through engaging in existing job fairs, as well as hackathon events. Another piece of our small business assistance is the Small Business Advisor through the Small Business Development Center. We partner with One Redmond to have a small business advisor that started in Q2 of this year and assisted a total of 39 businesses in a variety of counseling areas throughout the year. SBDC Small Business Advisors are available to meet with business owners of any industry at any stage of their business cycle, and the services are confidential, one-on-one, and provided at no cost to the client. However...
However, this is another program that we'll note that the staff will be evaluating for restructuring. We have been, as Philly mentioned, we've been doing this partnership with One Redmond and the Washington State SBDC for about five years. In that time, we've gone through four separate advisors. Each of those advisors has left, including the one that was just hired in March 2019. Each of those four has left for a different reason, but one of the challenges we find in the recruitment is just the labor market that we have. One of the primary challenges is that the salary that the partners are able to offer has a wide gap with market value for that similar skill set in the private sector. So we will be talking with our partners about other ways that we might deploy funds or different structures for this type of assistance to make it more cost-effective. Then in terms of partnerships, for this, other forms of partnerships and how they have improved Bellevue's economic development for 2019, you know, a lot of 2019 was working to grow and build capacity both inside and outside of City Hall. For example, in December, council received a briefing on the Grand Connection activation that we did in partnership with the Downtown Association. Based on council feedback and community response, we're working with the BDA to expand the work and scope out an activation for summer of 2020. Also connected with the Grand Connection, Bellweather, their new format is gaining traction and really starting to become a tourist draw during our Arts Week. In 2019, we saw over 1,700 attendees come into Bellevue across the week's 18 events, including 600 just at BAM's opening party. This was possible thanks to eight partner organizations and 60 artists, in addition to the city taking a lead role in the organizing. And certainly, last but not least, the city helped create a 5G innovation partnership zone, which we briefed council on several times last year. The new partnership kicked off one last unchecked item on the 2014 Economic Development Plan, which was establishing the technology zone for Bellevue to help spur innovation and accelerate technology development. So there will be more news on the 5G partnership, including accelerators and other portions of the program that will be done here in Bellevue, and those announcements should be coming out in the next few weeks. Staff is working to get the leads for the partnership program in to give council a briefing on that initiative. In terms of what's next for the next two quarters, we will be back on February 24th with the concept strategies for the new ED Plan. We will be continuing our business assistance work, and as Philly mentioned, working with REI to support their headquarters move. In terms of other activities, we are at this point waiting to see the outcomes of the ED strategy before we make any more promises to council in terms of our work for this year. So a lot of work on the plan, business assistance, and supporting our existing employers.
Great. Thank you. Thank you very much. So anybody have comments or questions on the presentation?
Sure.
Okay. Deputy Mayor Newenhouse.
First of all, great work, great presentation. Thanks for the update. In particular, I was happy to see that, and this is something that I brought up before, so I was really happy to see that it looks like there is renewed interest or investment in number of company visits, meaning focus on retention, which I think is so important to our existing companies here in Bellevue, that we're not just focused on the Amazons of the world, but we care about those companies that have been here for a long time, as well as the smaller companies, because as we've learned from this study, I, correct me if I'm wrong, wasn't it 83% of the workforce actually worked for small companies in Bellevue? Wasn't that one of the data points we got from the, from the update, from the report?
A lot of numbers.
I'm pretty sure that was it. Okay, okay. Anyways, again, my point being that we need, we need to really focus on those small companies and small to medium companies as well, not just on the big ones. So one of my questions that I had here was on the 5G. Sorry, you touched on that just briefly, but what are the next steps? Because to me, that's a very exciting program that we have there, and now that we've finally announced it, what can we see as potential next steps? And I know we've got some updates coming here shortly, but what do you see as some possible next steps there?
I think the largest next steps are, well, in the interim, there's been a lot of partnership development. For example, the Pacific Northwest National Labs has come on as a major partner to help with some of these things, and there have been some focus areas that have been developed. But the next big thing will be the announcement of the accelerator program and the companies that have been accepted into that accelerator cohort.
Okay, okay. And then on some of the partnerships, just curious your analysis of, you know, do our priorities match up with the Seattle, sorry, I want to get these names right, but the Seattle Partnership or the Innovation Triangle, the Greater Seattle Partners? Do our priorities line up when we engage in partnerships with them, or and how might they differentiate as well when we go to certain events with them, or we partner with them in terms of recruiting companies, et cetera? I'm just wondering what the balances are of our priorities matching up with them.
That's an insightful question, Deputy Mayor. So in regards to, well, I'll say, start with Greater Seattle Partners. So GSP is the primary partner for business retention, business recruitment in the region. So they do provide a lot of scale in terms of being able to go out and reach companies, whether they're domestic or international. And so their target clusters, their target industries do align with Bellevue's. And so we do provide routine input and feedback on the work that they're doing. In terms of our work with the Innovation Triangle Partners, we do see a lot of alignment in terms of our mutual interests in tech companies and technology recruitment. We do, I think, each have a slightly different spin on it and perspective. So we do try to differentiate in terms of value that the different cities bring, with, for example, Bellevue being the large urban downtown, Kirkland providing the more small waterfront type of community, and then Redmond being the home of Microsoft and providing access for that type of client. So we do see a lot of synergies with our work with them. The challenge is there's a lot of activity that each community is trying to handle all at once. So we're going to be sitting down with our partners actually later this week to talk about how to best invest each community's time and resources in that partnership.
Okay, great, great. Yeah, my own comment there is it's great to take advantage of those partnerships as long as they align with our priorities and our strategies, so that's great. But thanks again for the great update, and I look forward to hearing more on the 24th.
Thank you.
Great. Councilmember Barksdale.
Thank you for the work and the update. So I'm just going to start off with the question I asked at the end of the key demographics, and how are we touching on income inequality as part of the economic development plan?
With regards to the economic development plan, that, those are the strategies that the consultant is still preparing in terms of recommendations for our 24th meeting. I do think there are some key things that we're doing in terms of our work with Startup 425 and the demographics that we're seeing there.
Yeah, especially with the recommendations for the five-year plan of really being able to reach out and make sure that we have the format and a variety of means to reach more people so they can have the resources for the economic empowerment, I think, is one piece of that.
I think we are already seeing a fairly sizable portion that is of individuals that are unemployed, 21% of participants are unemployed in some fashion. So we are seeing that that need being, coming into us through Startup 425.
Cool. And how are we evaluating the effectiveness of Startup 425? I know you mentioned there's some, I can't remember exactly what you mentioned in terms of, oh, you surveyed, right?
Yes.
Are there other ways that we're measuring the effectiveness of Startup 425?
Right, I think one measurement would be the number of business starts and then the success of those business starts after three years, three to five years. So again, that's a goal of the strategic plan, is to be able to build more robust programming, to be able to take the people from the foundations level, which is really kind of the base knowledge, and a lot of times that's people who just have an idea, but then be able to navigate additional resources so they're able to actually start and grow a successful business and continue to have touchpoints with them through that, maybe that membership program, to be able to better track the success.
Awesome. Last question. So I know we're working with Greater Seattle Partners. I think we're a portfolio of cities. Can you talk a little bit about how like branding is happening throughout the region relative to people outside of Washington? As they're being branded.
With regards to GSP's branding of the region, so it is focused a lot on technology and innovation. So there's a lot of discussion about the major employers that are here, Microsoft, Amazon, Expedia, some of our other technology companies like Valve, et cetera. So it's a lot of positioning around innovation that happens primarily in the Asian and European markets.
Thank you.
Councilmember Lee.
Thank you. As you know, I have a great interest in economic development, and I think I will be spending more time with you guys. So I will not ask too many questions at this moment because I know that you are preparing for the new plan that will be presented to us in a couple of weeks. So we'll see more answers, I think, to some of the questions. But I do have a couple of things just to make sure that perhaps you haven't thought about. One is, we heard today, you know, in the demographics presentation, we heard about the, what's the word, the underdeveloped human potential, right? I mean, we have lots of folks here. They may not have come to 425 yet to talk about what they can do, but I think, you know, it's untapped, untapped human capital. So let's keep that in mind. How do we, you know, it's important, very important asset that we have. The other one is, have been talked about, you know, we need to anticipate long-term economic cycle, and so sustainable economy has been, you know, one area that, you know, when things are doing well, you know, everybody's, we want to attract ongoing business, everybody's going to be successful. But how about some economies that really is good for us, but at the same time, it's good for good time and bad time? You know, we need to, again, tap on those resources in technology and otherwise. So I think we may want to address that. The other one is finally how to evaluate startups, your 425 program. Basically, SBA has been working on that for ages, you know, as far as the U.S. Small Business Administration exists. They're working with SBDC, SCORE, and all those groups that I've been working with. But it's a very difficult, challenging business group because there are people who just happen to be thinking about, dreaming about doing something. They have a job, this is why I have nothing else to do, maybe I can find out how I want to be successful, become, you know, Bill Gates of tomorrow, you know? So they don't know where to go. So it's good that we need to have a resource to help them. So what you're doing, I think, is a good thing, using public access and whatnot, but there may be, however, other more creative ways to, to be more available, more accessible. Right now, they have to come to either SBA or come to you because they know there's an Innovation Triangle they can go to, or there may be some limited marketing. SBA say, you guys can do this, SBDC can help do that. So, but, so it's necessary, it's education process. And you don't know that people will come to you, at what level are they ready to go? Some of them just, no idea, they just want to learn something. Some are really ready to go. So I think answering to Councilmember Barksdale's question, how do you manage it? That's very hard. I think it's an education process. You just have to do it. Hopefully, out of a thousand, you have 10 of them, and one of them become Microsoft, right? So I think that's, that's education process. So you have to put in the proper perspective to see how we need to commit, devote our resources to do certain things. So, but still, you know, I think that needs to be addressed. How do we, how do we keep our commitment, know that we are making progress? Finally, that's it. I also appreciate the branding question that was asked. Your answer is it's a regional branding innovation technology. I believe that Bellevue itself need to have a branding. Everybody now talk about Bellevue, they say, oh, that's Seattle. So, right? I think we need to figure that out separately. It's important, branding, people need to know Bellevue, what's our asset, what's our strength, how do we stand out? And what's good for Bellevue, however, whatever we do, obviously, it's good for the region. We need to be big picture, we need to work together, but I think that has to be a niche, that's a strength that people are going to be, you know, looking at Bellevue. Thanks.
Any comments, Jesse, on that?
With regards to Startup 425 and the accessibility piece, those are wonderful comments, Councilmember Lee. We will actually be working with the partners to see what new opportunities emerge in terms of online courses and accessibility in those ways. And then, yes, with regards to the branding, my, and the marketing as GSP undertakes it, there is work that they do in terms of just making sure that they know that Bellevue, that companies around the world, that Bellevue is an alternative and a primary competitor to Seattle within the region. And so we do see a lot of additional interest coming through in Bellevue in terms of a couple of different conferences in, primarily in Europe at this point, are asking for more information about Bellevue to be able to promote the, both the real estate opportunities as well as the talent opportunities here.
Terrific. Thank you. Councilmember Robertson.
Thank you. I have three subjects I'd like to touch, those we'll briefly on. First, with regard to office space, I think it's, we all know that there's a high demand for office. I think we have the lowest vacancy rate in the region, and I didn't realize that we were the highest rent per square foot, although maybe I had seen that number before. My, and I think this will drive more people to a virtual office, but I was very interested to see that 8% of all people in King County work remotely from home. So I think that that's something that would be good because people can then afford to start businesses that way with no impact on the neighborhood, but also it has a positive impact on our transportation system. So that's just a comment. My question is whether we, what we are projecting with regard to office space affordability in the future, because we have between the amount... in the future, because we have between the amount of office we have, either under construction or in permitting, it's about 10 million square feet. Now, we know not all of that will go, because some that's in permitting won't, will fall out over time, but that's enough for 100,000 employees, enough space for 100,000 employees. I don't know if we think that that's going to reduce the, the square foot cost of average rent, or, and whether we think, or we think it's gonna, what we think it's gonna do, I don't know, supply and demand being what it is. But I'm very worried as we renovate and replace lower classes of office space with Class A office space, that those startup facilities, to the extent people can't start up in their home or apartment, will be lost. And I know that the mayor shares this concern with me about making sure we have spaces for incubator. So that's more of a comment for the plan that is coming, but I thought, you're here, I'm here, let's talk about it. So I'd be very curious to see what we can do about that. Number two, I know that we, as, in transportation technology, and particularly with ACES, which is autonomous, connected, and electric, and shared vehicles, we have been a convener. So I would expect that we will be seeing a lot more innovation in that sector in the future. So just want to make sure that I put a pin in that for the economic development plan. Finally, with regard to the income issue, I think it's great that our Startup 425 is bringing in so many people that really need to, or, or have more of a need to have a higher income and, and have to help them be entrepreneurs. I think that's great. One of the other things I think we should not lose sight of, because the economic development plan isn't going to solve the issue, but what we can do is we could focus our efforts on making sure that we bring in companies that pay family wage jobs. And I think that that, coupled with the, with the Startup 425, is part of the solution, because we want employers to be able to hire people and pay them enough so that they can live in the region, or within the city of Bellevue. So that, I think, should be a focus of the future plan. So, that's all, thanks. And by the way, this is one of the best economic development quarterly, we've been doing these quarterly reports for a few years now, this is one of the best ones, so well done you.
Thank you.
Was it in content or presentation?
Both.
Both.
Yeah, content, I was focusing me on the content, but yeah, both. Excellent information, not just a bunch of grids with checkboxes, which I like to read, but a lot more in-depth content, and I really do appreciate it.
Councilmember Stokes.
Yeah, my thanks as well. I'm really glad we're updating this, it's about time, and I think we're realizing that five, 10 years is kind of a long time between things, and so we have to be a little more nimble on this. Yeah, a number of issues I think we're raising on this, one of the things that I think is, you brought up, and want to mention in terms of innovation and all of that, and the Innovation Triangle, again, and updating, I've been talking about this for some time, but I think we are at a point with that, that we can expand that to what I call innovation crescent, going from Bothell all the way down to Renton over to Issaquah, because we're becoming even more an integrated area, and we're the leader in that. And I think that's, that's something to look for in the future, because, one, there are a lot of people going back and forth in those places, working here and there, and so it's just isolating on what we're doing is, is great, because we know that, but we have to be part of the bigger, so that's something I'm interested in down the line. And the other is this issue of the untapped human capital, I think is a very important piece. And then I have, well, the other one that kind of concerned me a little bit was some of the deficits, and some things that affect, that affect economic development, and I had those in three categories. One is, and you see these in articles, talking about Bellevue and what it has to, that's attractive and all, and some, and some of the things that are missing to a certain extent are, one, cultural, and, you know, cultural features, restaurants, entertainment, how do we increase it? It's, it's really gone tremendous just from five years ago, but compared to a lot of those other cities that we're looking at, and compared to Seattle, we still have a ways to go on that. It'd be interesting how we can really make that go on. And the culture piece is very important, and that gets to the whole concept of, you know, the, of the, what am I trying to say, the creative economy. And we didn't really talk about that, but I think that's, again, important for this. The second thing is the community development. How do we, how do we look at community development, and particularly in the neighborhoods, the different parts of the city, integrated? Because again, that's part of the pieces that make people want to come here, businesses come here, we can't forget that, and how those, those are developing. And the third one is really the housing issues. We go down to the human service issues, to the homeless issues, to the housing issues, how do we, how do we deal with those? And I think we're going to have even more pressure to address those, and those are things that can really affect economic development as well. So it's, it's that real large approach. So I'm excited about this, and it's going to be a great conversation, and I'm hoping we're talking about this at the retreat, because this is, how do we, how do we take all this great stuff that's coming to Bellevue and make it work, and not miss some of the smaller pieces in it? I think it's important. But great work, and I really appreciate it, and I agree with Councilmember Robertson, this is, this is the best presentation. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember.
Councilmembers on.
Well, I appreciate my fellow councilmembers' comments. I mean, I'm excited about the Hackathon event, right? Because the idea of this culture of innovation, and, and a space that really inspires folks to want to be here and have a business here. I was struck, though, by, at the beginning, you talked about the high rents, the transportation options and mobility choices, which then businesses may not look at certain areas the same, like Victoria and Eastgate, because of the, there are less transportation options to get in and out. So how we actually look at that, so that, so that different neighborhoods that are zoned to have economic development actually also have that opportunity, so we're not so concentrated in downtown. So, you know, how do we work with the T-Mobiles and the REIs in the placemaking to make that work even better? And how are we making sure that from a transportation standpoint, that they're not, that we're in partnership to make it work, instead of creating more transportation challenges? Because what I get worried about is that if we have a lot of traffic congestion, maybe people aren't going to be getting in their car and, and, you know, or walking at lunchtime to different little small businesses. So that's one of the things I worry about a little bit. I like the fact that we're looking at online and virtual formats for accessibility, because I do think that one of the challenges with small businesses, they're trying to make a living, and so, although I think it's nice that we offer six courses as part of the foundation, if they are doing that, they're not earning an income, so I think that's a challenge. So the idea of creating more online formats so that they don't have to go every time, I think it's huge. I had a chance to go to the King County Library System, they, they launched their welcoming center in downtown Bellevue Library, and it sounded like one of the things they talked about is that if you come from a different country, you may not even know what it takes to start a business. So some may think that it's going to be really easy, and they run into a lot of the bureaucracy, and others may actually think it's so hard that they don't even try, when in reality, if we help walk them through the steps, it's an untapped human potential. So if we could maybe look at some other partners like that, to see how we can help? Because I am struck by the fact that, like you said, with the, the SBA, or SB, SBDC, that it is hard to pay competitive rates. So how do we do that in more in partnerships, so we don't continue to have a rotating leadership in that organization and that program? Really honing in on with our resources, how do we make it more meaningful than, because I'm also curious about with the 1,284 registrants in the Startup 425, how many of them actually started a business? Or how long did it take before, when they had an idea, it actually germinated into a business? And is that some information we can, we can report on as well?
On that question, yes. So we did an outcomes survey about this time last year, and we have that data available. I believe our partners in Kirkland are also looking at doing an outcome survey this year to be able to track those progressions.
Okay. And then my last one is, you know, maybe this is one of those opportunities to look around at different businesses that are here, to allow some pop-ups that can, can show up even more broadly than we are. So, and maybe the, the food truck one, we were hearing earlier with the city year, might be one step of, of a pop-up that can show up in a space, but how can we look at that more broadly? But, thank you, very exciting.
Thank you.
Well, Councilmember Robertson's right, I am a big fan of startups and small business, and I think the stat that stood out to me last time you presented was, was it 90% of all business in Bellevue is small business?
97.
97? That's even, that's even larger. So I like the ideas, I can't remember who said it, but of looking at some of our older buildings that maybe support, are supporting small businesses right now, and looking at preserving that. You know, there's, there is that thought that as much as you can support affordable housing, you can do the same for small, for a business, so that might be something for the council to talk about when you come back. And of course, I'm a fan of the workforce development.
Yes.
So I'm looking forward to hearing more about that.
Thank you, Mayor. And I do think that the council will be very happy with some of the strategies that will be coming forward on the 24th.
Terrific. Okay, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Okay, we have continued oral communications for those who didn't make it to the beginning of the meeting, I don't know how many we have signed up, but.
There's one in the chat.
Okay.
Don Marsh.
Don Marsh, come on up. Welcome.
Thank you. Well, I just wanted to say that having sat through this meeting, I thought that your four presentations tonight were just such a perfect encapsulation of what's exciting about our city. I mean, you had the innovation with the, with the college kids, and tapping into their energy and, and creativity, and then you had the, the diversity brought out in the Census, Census Report, and you had the, the importance of parks and trails and trees in the, in the Parks presentation, and then just the economic powerhouse and potential for this city going forward. And so it was, it was really exciting to me. And as you know, at, at this particular time, we've got a power line project on 148th that doesn't check off too many of those boxes. And the community is really looking for a way to work with the city, with PSE, with the community, to come up with something that preserves these, this well-loved part of our city. It's just, it's such an inspiring and beautiful place to, to commute through. I did it for more than a decade when I was working at Microsoft. It's, it's really a treasure for our city. And so we've come up with an idea that you could, just on 148th, it's only a one and a half mile stretch, you could put underground, those transmission lines underground, and that would allow at least a high number of the trees to remain. If you have to take some out for root issues or something, you can plant trees that can grow to their full height, and can preserve the, the beauty of, of that part of the city. So there's, there's tremendous energy, tremendous will to try to find a solution that will work. And, you know, I know that this will cost a little bit, a little bit of money for the city, but, you know, when we look at, at these, like, these partnerships with business, I mean, maybe we could put, put together something with REI and Microsoft, and maybe T-Mobile, maybe they kick in a little bit. I think they would like to have their names on a project like this. I think it would be a great PR opportunity for PSE to show that they're willing to work with the community. I think it would be a win for the city council to show that you're, you're listening to the community and willing to, to really bring out these, you know, the, the things that make Bellevue great, the, the creativity and the innovation, and our deep respect for our environment and these trees. So we are, we are looking for that opportunity to partner with the city to, to do this. I'd love to, to have some conversation about this. I have been talking to some of you, and I'm meeting some of you later on. So let's, let's really see, see what we can do for our community. Thank you so much.
Okay, and with that, our meeting is adjourned.